Okay, good morning. It's 9:34 and I will call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and please ask the clerk to call the roll to establish a quorum.
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cablecast Live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 3rd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The Chairperson will open public comments for each agenda and off-agenda matter and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make their comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Clerk Staff will transfer each caller into the meeting and you may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 874-5451, that's area code 916, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd ask us to please stand and Supervisor Frost lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk, I see on the agenda clerk to announce vacancies. Is that...
Oh, those vacancies are listed at the back of the agenda.
Okay, so you don't need...okay.
Yeah, I don't need to announce them. Thank you for asking.
Okay, then we'll move on to item one, which is off-agenda public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on an item that is not listed on the agenda. If it is something either on the consent agenda or on the timed matters today, I would ask that you reserve your comments until we get to those matters. So with that, Madam Clerk, off-agenda public comments.
I don't have the information up on my screen, so hang on one second. Everything is moved here. Thank you. So if we could have Roland Brady come down to the podium, and then this is the order that we're going in. So Lisa Sanchez will be next, and if you want to maybe line up, that would help to move the process along.
Can I have the video?
Yeah, I'll put the video on, and if you could stand between the two mics when you're ready to speak, and I'll get your video ready. Or your camera, sorry. So if you could stand between the mics.
Oh. Just the two main mics at the main podium. You can just pull those towards you. There you go.
All right, very good.
All right, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, and you're gonna have two minutes to make your public comment. Okay, go ahead and start with your comment.
My name is Roland Brady. I have a PhD in geology. I taught watershed hydrology, and I'm here with the River City Waterway Alliance, and I have a proposal for you all. As you may or may not be familiar what the situation is along our waterways, there are debris from camps that are up on the river terraces, lower down on the banks, and when the water level rises, this debris washes into not only the creek but the American River, which washes into the Sacramento River and eventually into the Delta. The problem is that this stuff not only floats, but it sinks to the bottom of the waterways. And there has to be a better way to do this, some way to control the amount of debris that's going into the waterways. The camps are not only bodies where people are living, but there are complexes of these. In this particular one, this complex of camps is over 200 feet long and consists of several of them side by side by side. 293 feet here along the American River, right at the end. Most of these have already been cleaned up. Almost 300 feet of camps, solid trash, not only physical waste but pathogenic waste and toxic waste as well. Now, according to the...is there a way to zoom in on this? According to the State of California Department of Fish and Game Code, it is unlawful to deposit permit to pass into or place where it can pass into waters of the state, within 150 feet of the high-water mark of waters of the state, any of this kind of debris. So clearly, the county is out of compliance with this state law. So what I would propose...no.
You need to wrap up. You're at your two minutes.
So what I would propose is...
So you're at your two minutes, so can the next speaker come down, please? I'm so sorry, but you're given two minutes per comment. Thank you.
I understand that there is a group that wants to go in a certain order, and so let me just double-check that. So I'm not sure if Baker, Brady, Sanchez, and Smith are a group. Are you part of that group?
It would just be Mark Baker to go first before me.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to accommodate your request.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for bearing with me, everyone, and let me know when you're ready, and I'll start the timer for you.
Good morning. I'm Mark Baker with River City Waterway Alliance, and I'm here to ask you to do more to protect our rivers and streams. Over the last six weeks, we have performed 25 group cleanups of our waterways, resulting in over 166,000 pounds of trash removed. Last Saturday, we removed an estimated 8,000 pounds of trash from one abandoned flooded camp right near the river at North Rip area of the Parkway. At 10 cleanups at Township 9, we removed 53,370 pounds. It's like an apocalypse down there, with scores of camps all under feet of water. With five cleanups at Howe Avenue, we have removed 21,650 pounds of trash and debris. How is looking better than it's looked in many years. At the River...oh, that's it. Riverdale-Northgate area, we have removed during six cleanups 60,000 pounds of trash from dozens of flooded camps. At Arcade Creek, we have removed 10,300 pounds during six cleanups. Steelhead Creek, 15,000 pounds at one cleanup. North Laguna Creek, 1,800 pounds at one cleanup. Our effectiveness can be verified by our partners Sacramento County Regional Parks, Forensic Clean RD-1000, City of Sacramento, American River Flood Control District County Parks, and DOT, and one other, I can't remember. You must help us with these agencies protect this fragile ecosystems from encampments and all illegal trash and dumping. This five-gallon jug of more than 1,100 needles was just one of two we have collected in just six weeks. 2,200 needles removed from our waterways is just an example of the biohazards we find. Half of this jug was found from one camp in the Northgate area of the Parkway. This flooded camp washed needles and trash throughout the entire area. We found needles in all the brush and grusses in the entire area.
Okay, Sir, you're at your two minutes. I'll have to end your public comments, and the next speaker will start now. Thank you.
Just thank you for your time. You get the idea.
Thank you.
I believe next in your group is Lisa Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez, do you have things you want to put on there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll leave that up for you.
Thank you.
So you can get ready.
And then Randy, you can come on down too and be ready to pick up after Lisa.
Okay. Hello to everyone. My name is Lisa, and I volunteer with River City Waterway Alliance in my spare time to help clean up trash and debris in the Sacramento and American River, the Parkway, Steelhead Creek, Arcade, Morrison, Laguna Creek, and more. I choose to dedicate my spare time to help restore and protect our creeks, rivers, and waterways within Sacramento. Before helping at my very first cleanup in Arcade Creek, I had no idea how trashed our waterways were. We were considered the epitome of green, being the capital of California at the forefront of ecological rules and regulations, the city of trees and the city of two rivers. But since helping to remove hundreds of shopping carts, tents, sleeping bags, food wrappers, containers, clothes, shoes, suitcases, garbage cans, human waste buckets and bags, used syringes and other debris that have no place in our waterways, I've come to understand the full scope of detriment here. The level of contamination was and is astounding. The fact that a small group of people can work to remove a million pounds of trash and debris within a year and a half shows how much work and help our waters need. This million pounds is literally a drop in the bucket. How can the capital of California allow their beautiful waterways, one of the gems we tout and are known for, ignore, neglect, or drinking water, our tourist draw, and our environment? We felt there was headway made with the addition of creeks and waterways added to the county ordinance of critical infrastructure back in August, but nothing has come from that. We plead for the 150-foot buffer from our ordinary high-water mark, matching the Fish and Wildlife Code 5652, but that fell on deaf ears. I, we are pleading with the Board to help restore and protect our waterways along with us. We feel that no one cares. Increase budget and allow a money allowance to mitigate trash removal, update restrictions that prevent agencies and crews to get into the creeks, enforce wildlife restoration areas that are protected, and stand behind current ordinances and rules. There are so many things that could and should be done here. Please help us get on the right track with how California and Sacramento should be in the eyes of the world and show that we actually care about the environment and our livelihood, not just say we do. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Smith. Do you have items for the docu-camera, Mr. Smith?
I'm Randy Smith. I'm with, again, with River City Waterway Alliance. As some of you know, I've been working on trying to protect our rivers and waterways for years. I just didn't get on the display to show the number of hypodermic needles we are picking up out of the...our waterways. Thank you, Mark. So as I've talked to some of the people who are living along our creeks and waterways, I've asked them about all these needles, and they...two of them in particular, one on Steelhead Creek, one on Arcade Creek, explained to me how there's a needle exchange program, which I'm somewhat aware of, but they explained how they're getting the needles from Harm Reduction was one of the places that they mentioned how they deliver a box of...actually, four boxes, 500 needles per box. And these are...I don't see my time. They are not required to do the exchange. They're needles, they're receiving needles, and two of the people I talked with on the creeks got out of the program. They were tired of seeing all these needles around their camps and every place else. They were doing all they could to encourage others to put their needles in the Sharps containers that they were provided with. Some of them went back. I would hope that most of them went back, but this is an example of what is out in our waterways. And a name like Harm Reduction is kind of a misnomer because I look at all the kids that want to play along these creeks and waters, and to have these things in the waters for generations ahead of us, it's very disturbing and it's a health hazard. So I don't know if the Board can do anything to help correct the wrongs in this needle exchange program. My understanding is I just learned more recently that it's more of a state-mandated program. The counties are given some...might be, you know, the County Health Department might be involved with the party. I don't understand all of it. Hopefully, all of you do. And anything we can do as citizens to help correct and not have this kind of...twice as many that were just in the past few weeks, we've been cleaning up. There's so many needles out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
And our next speaker is Debbie Woolley.
Debbie, before you start, are you talking also about the Parkway, any issues along the Parkway, or something else?
No, but you...
Okay, so before you get started, I just want to comment. Obviously, the group from the River City Waterway Alliance, you know, I thank you for your work and your passion. Obviously, this is off-agenda, so we can't have a discussion about it, but later on today, we are having a discussion about the Natural Resources Management Plan, and I intend to ask a few questions about this issue there. And then also, you know, I do have questions about the Harm Reduction Program, specifically the Needle Exchange Programs. I know there is a dynamic with state and local, and this is a big problem I certainly see in my district with bags just being dropped off in places. So at some point, you know, I just want to let you know, I will follow up with you on that. I know we really can't talk about it here too much, but would also, you know, Liz, I'm looking at Liz Bellis, to talk a little bit about some of our efforts along the Parkway when we get to the Natural Resources Management Plan discussion. And I see Supervisor Kennedy in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. Just real briefly, and it'd be nice, especially as we're going into budget soon, to get a full accounting of what we are actually spending on cleanup on the Parkway. And I know we get that number, but what we get is five different numbers sometimes, and we gotta find them, because there's so many agencies that this touches. You know, what are we paying Forensic Clean, even Regional Sand, you know, what are they doing? What's DOT doing? If we could get all those numbers into one place to have a real good picture of what we are currently doing, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I too want to lend my thanks to the...all the groups, not just the group that is presenting here this morning, but also the American River Parkway Foundation, and Sarah, and all the others that are proven great stewards of our American River Parkway. Just dovetailing on what Supervisor Kennedy just mentioned, if you go back and look at the past several years of our budget deliberations, and in particular, the focus that my office and others, but specifically my office, has placed on trying to maximize resources for the Parkway. I think Liz Bellis, she's our Parks Director, she can attest to this, as can others in this room. We have been able to make some advancements in terms of personnel, maintenance personnel, and ranger personnel for public safety purposes, but it really is during our budget deliberations where I believe all of the organizations that rightfully are concerned about the American River Parkway can make the greatest impact by frankly influencing this Board to prioritize more so than we have in the past, the ability to ourselves be great stewards of the Parkway and keep it clean, and provide our nonprofit partners with the resources they need and the assistance that they need. I know that I believe one of the last budget adjustments we made probably about three or four years ago, Liz, was the addition of Bobcats and personnel to operate the Bobcats and trucks and a few more maintenance personnel. Obviously, when you're looking at a 26-mile-long Parkway, 4,500 acres, and you're still talking about the number of personnel that we have available to take care of that asset, it is, and I'll be the first to admit this, it is not enough. It's not nearly enough. And as someone that has helped clean the Parkway himself for several years, in fact, being stuck with a hypodermic needle myself more than 11 years ago now, and I hope no one was stuck with collecting those needles, but let me tell you, it's not something you want to go through in having to worry for several weeks whether or not you contracted anything. But I just, again, want to underscore the impact that you can make to achieve what I believe I hear you advocating for really is best placed in the month of June, when we're deliberating our budget. So I'm hopeful I'll see you back here during those deliberations, along with many others that care so deeply like I do, you do, we do, about our American River Parkway.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Couldn't agree more. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo the points that were just made, because I've long maintained that if you show me your checkbook, I'll show you your priorities. And if we do not make protecting this resource a priority during our budget session, then that kind of litter and, as was mentioned, that extends into future generations will continue. And so when we, you know, are talking about how to approach the epidemic that homelessness has become, and we, you know, refer to things like the Boise Decision, or we speak of the civil liberties and agency of the unhoused, that is not agency. That is illegal pollution that Supervisor Serna was cleaning up the Parkway of his own volition. A child playing in a creek because he's having, or she is having, a normal childhood, wanting to grow up and gets stabbed by one of those needles, that's an unconscionable failure of our society. So I too would encourage everyone who feels passionately about this to come back during budget discussions, and thank you all for what you're doing to at least try and make an impact where you can, how you can.
Thank you Supervisor Hume. Okay, I'll turn it back to our clerk to resume public comment.
Okay, Ms. Woolley, it's your turn now, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to...I know I only have two minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. I'm calling...I'm here today to talk about a point of order from last Board of Supervisors meeting on the 7th of February. The consent calendar showed an agenda item on genome tracking, and the public asked you to take it off the consent calendar and put it into a discussion. There was no contract included in the agenda or the agenda attachments. What we have found out is that, like needles in the Parkway, it's best to pay attention before things become a crisis and down the road. So what I'm talking about is genome tracking. This agreement that was signed a year ago, it is not a no-cost... tracking. This agreement that was signed a year ago, it is not a no-cost agreement, although it said on the agenda that it was. The raw DNA and RNA data from patients is being uploaded to a cloud platform, and therefore, it is subject to being hacked and compromised. It does not state where this private data is going to be stored. The COVID net labs are not identified. And we have found in other regions of our country, lack of security, and there's a potential for violating the patient's privacy rights by giving companies that operate in the country of China access. Based on these concerns, we respectfully request that the board rescind approval of the contract extension until a thorough, transparent review of these can be addressed by you and the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Ryan Harris.
Yeah.
They're already stapled individually. Yeah. Okay.
Did you make enough copies for the clerk?
Five, yeah. Oh, not for the clerk. No, I'm sorry about that.
We'll get it on the back.
Maybe they'll share one and allow you to have one.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, so you have two minutes, Ryan, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, so picture up here is again that same area that I bring to you every time, Rich Desmond, in your district that you continue to neglect. As you see, there's still more trash out there. The other trash would be out there, but I cleaned it up last time. Also, I want to note that you guys were out yesterday, or last meet, last week, but still had it posted that you guys would be here. I myself came up here, a couple other people came up here and were under the impression that there was a meeting. So, when you guys do cancel meetings, hopefully you guys keep the community informed on that a little bit better. Nonetheless, I would like to ask, any of you up there are racist or support racism? Sue Frost, are you racist? Do you support racism? Kennedy Patrick, are you racist? Do you support racism? Rich Desmond, are you racist? Do you support racism? Phil Serna, are you racist? Do you support racism?
Okay, Mr. Harris, this is a time for comment, not to be engaging the board members and asking questions of the board members. So, please just make your comments.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you said that, because the reason I said that is that I know you guys aren't supposed to engage, but you just did. And it's a lot easier to say no than it is to say all those other things you said. And the reason that I'm asking that is because you guys continue to support racist acts that have been taken against me, and that's why I've given you those paperworks today. Those are, if you could please serve them to Ethan Dye, that's the small claims that I have against him for the words that were said against me and the acts that were done. Again, the reason that I did ask if you're racist, because it is a lot easier to say no, which none of you did, surprisingly. With that aside, you guys are very good at your job and what you do, in the sense of knowing policies and knowing how to keep people like me and people who are going through my situation down. You guys have attorneys call me saying they want to help, and then saying not to worry about past court dates. And then when that happens, the court date is dropped, and then the attorney is nowhere to be found. So, now I'm letting anybody who's out there that has attorney and would like to handle my case, they can have 100% of the profit or whatever comes from it free of charge. With that said, I understand that I am out of time, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'd like to address the board that the cancellation is posted on your calendar, and that was a hold. It wasn't an actual meeting, so there wasn't a cancellation notice posted. But we'll get that process connected so that there's no future issues.
Thank you, Flo.
Okay, so we do have callers, so I'm going to switch to callers, and we're going to close the queue. But we'll have, we'll have Tamika transfer in the first caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. Two minutes is not enough time. It should be three. The Sacramento County Public Library is intentionally flooding the Elk Grove branch of the library and possibly all the other branches with huge amounts of cold air in the name of limiting the spread of COVID. It is freezing in there. This is according to the branch supervisor Stephanie Tofala. Supervisors, please maintain a comfortable temperature in every branch of the county library in the winter. I looked up the page of guidance that Mr. Tofala sent me. It's from OSHA, Occupational Safety and Health Administration. There are so many things wrong with it. It is 20 months old and very outdated, last updated on June 10, 2021. It is guidance, not a standard or regulation. It creates no new legal obligations on the county. The H in HVAC stands for heating. The OSHA guidance doesn't say you cannot run the heat in the winter. It doesn't say you should bring large amounts of cold air into a cold library. I'm just asking the facilities manager to use his or her common sense. If you want to bring in outside air, fine, heat it. Turn on the heat. What does this non-binding OSHA guidance say? It says ventilation should be adequate, and you should operate your HVAC system in accordance with the manufacturer's instructions. Guess what? The manufacturer's instructions tell you how to use your HVAC system to have heat in the winter. It says ensure that the ventilation system is operating as intended. It's intended to provide heat and comfort in the winter, but the library is not doing it. 20 months ago, you could not get on an airplane without wearing a mask, and today, you can in every state. I'm asking the board to direct staff to look into this, have a meeting with me, and make the necessary changes so that when you go into the county library in the winter, you are comfortable. And please give me the name and contact information for the library's facilities manager. Thank you very much. And please note on the board's webpage that says about board meetings, it says each speaker will have three minutes for comments on items not on the agenda. You have unfortunately cut it down to two, and this is unfairly limiting public comment. You can tell that there are very well-prepared-
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And make sure that hopefully the three-minute indication's not showing up on, still on the website or anything else. Make sure it's consistent.
We'll double-check that, and if it is, we'll change it right now.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I don't know if the speakers listening online, watching the streaming meeting, but probably the more appropriate venue and body, in front of which to present the claims that he has, is our library authority, Board of Directors. So, I would, you know, respectfully suggest that he do that so that our library staff can also hear the same grievances and concerns as well as county staff. So, hopefully that message is getting out there.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Good point.
All right, next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Margot Mendelson, and I am the Legal Director of the Prison Law Office. I serve as lead counsel for Maysby Sacramento, which is our lawsuit against the county of Sacramento relating to conditions of confinement in the Sacramento County jails. As you know, we've had contact with this body over the years in our long efforts to address serious problems in the jail that affect the thousands of people who live there. Many of those problems are complex, multifaceted, and intractable, but I am calling today about one that is not. Our clients in the jail are faced today with a crisis that is unnecessary, preventable, and totally unacceptable, so I'm calling to ask the board to take action. Today, it is 40 degrees in Sacramento, and my clients in the jail have nothing to wear except a t-shirt and pants, and they are freezing. Last month, we requested that Sheriff Cooper obtain sweatshirts or long-sleeve shirts for those people in custody. We explained to him that people are freezing and isolated in their cells, huddled under blankets, and the sheriff's office refused our demand, despite the fact that this practice is an outlier among jails and prisons, and also despite the fact that the sheriff's inmate welfare fund had in excess of $11 million last year and likely substantially more now. We are preparing to go back to federal court to enforce our client's basic rights, and we're confident that the court will force the county to provide for the basic needs of the people incarcerated. That's the very purpose of the Constitution. But this will be time-consuming, and it's expensive for this county to pay our legal fees. This is an unnecessary dispute, and I believe that the members of this board agree that the sheriff's position on this issue is beneath the dignity of the county. So, I'm calling to ask the board to exert any pressure it can on the sheriff to reverse this cruel and untenable position.
Okay, are you done with your comment?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. So, the next caller has already called, but they say they're calling about a different topic. So, I'm going to ask them to submit that comment in writing, because it's one caller, one comment per off-agenda. It should have been included in that. So, we'll have them submit that in writing.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, that concludes your public comments.
Okay. So, now we'll move on to our consent items, and we'll take the, we have a couple of presentations, but we'll take the remainder of the consent calendar first and then go back to those presentations. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so for your consent matters, items 2 through 50, I do have a couple of notes. For item 12, you're introducing an ordinance. This is to adopt salary equity adjustments for certain department heads, authorize the county executive to adjust the car allowance and management time off, amend Section 45 of the salary ordinance, and introduce amendments to Sacramento County Personnel Ordinance 2.78.415A, to adjust the current requirement to conduct a salary survey annually to every five years, waive full reading and continue to March 28th for adoption with an effective date of April 18, 2023. For item 44, you're introducing another ordinance at the request of Supervisor Kennedy. Consider the introduction of the proposed ordinance to repeal Chapter 10.66, Title 10 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the regulation of cruising. Waive full reading and continue to March 14th, 2023 for adoption. And then I also need the board to drop item 22. This is to authorize the Director of Waste Management and Recycling to execute Amendment Number 5 to the agreement with Sterns, Conrad, and Schmidt Consulting Engineers. There's also a retroactive amendment with Blue Flame Crew West, and this is for the call of on-call maintenance, repair, and modification of landfill gas collection to increase the maximum payment amount and extend the term. So, we did receive that request to drop that item this morning.
And I'm sorry, Flo, which item was that?
That was number 22.
22?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's dispense, dispose of that one.
So, I'll need you to call for a motion in a second to drop that.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And that concludes my notes.
Okay, thank you. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there's any comment or questions on consent items. I'll start with Supervisor Frost. I'm sorry. Item 39, we'll-
39.
Okay. Are there any other items for you, Ms. Frost?
No.
No, okay, let me get to that. Item 39 is the authority to execute a retroactive revenue agreement with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention.
Okay, I just wanted to pull item 39 and go on record as opposing it, mostly because I'm not comfortable to vote on something where I haven't seen all the information. I don't feel I have enough information.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. Do we have any, any public comment on this item?
For item number nine, let me double-check.
39.
Oh, 39, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. We'll note that when we vote on the remainder of the consent calendar. Okay, any other supervisors with comments or questions about consent items? Okay, I have a couple of myself. I apologize. I thought there'd be others. I can, I can feel Supervisor Kennedy glaring at me. Item number, item number four.
Four, okay. Do you want to give me your list?
Well, I was going to talk about, make brief comments about item 4, 38, and 40.
38 and 40. Okay, sir, just let me get to item four. Item four, I'll do an abbreviated
Yes.
version, is to approve American Rescue Plan Act District Directed Funding allocations for District 3 to the Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District and Sacramento Parks Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Just briefly wanted to, first of all, thank staff, and with a lot of these ARPA allocations, we've had, you know, it's been a challenge sometimes figuring out the best way to accomplish these. But these are two ARPA allocations out of District 3 funds, and I'm very, two causes that I very much support. The Empowerment Park, which is going to be an inclusive playpark in Arden Arcade, and really going to be something that'll, I think, provide a lot of bragging rights for Arden Arcade to be providing this kind of amenity, and obviously to support the work of the LGBT Center. So, I want to thank staff for that.
Okay. And then for item 38, this is the authority to amend and increase four expenditure contracts. This is for the provision of specialty mental health outpatient services to adults through the Community Outreach Recovery Empowerment Program.
And just again, wanted to thank staff for this, and want to just call it out, because this is, you know, one of these things, there's so much discussion about what the county is doing and is not doing. This is an effort that's obviously been ongoing, but want to thank you, Siobhan, and your team for, and my colleagues here, for supporting these projects to bring on additional capacity to address our behavioral health needs in Sacramento County. And without you calling out 40, just really the comments on item 40 along the same line, just again, wanted to call both those items out and thank staff for all your work on both of these. Any on these?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, Supervisor Serna?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I too wanted to join in the thanks relative to our coordination to deploy the CORE program. Had the chance to visit Turning Point's CORE facility in the North Gate neighborhood, part of District 1, last week, and was very impressed, was able to take a tour of the facility, and also hear from the folks that are running it, both professional staff and volunteers. And I think the, the network of these CORE sites are going to do a great deal of good for those that really need help the most in our community. And it, I think it's a great addition to our continuum of care. And so, I'm really glad that the chair called that out and reminded us all that we're trying to, you know, really get our minds and hearts wrapped around the complexities of homelessness and the intersection with homelessness and mental health in particular. And this is a great way to do just that. So, again, thanks to Siobhan, and Anne, and everyone else that has really helped us prioritize this.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair Desmond. I also wanted to pull number nine for comments.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to item nine.
Are we ready for that? Okay, item nine is to authorize the execution of a short-term lease agreement with the California Department of Forestry-
I guess I'm, go ahead.
And fire protection.
I'm not really pulling it. I just wanted to say I'm very excited to support this item. CAL FIRE has already been a great partner for those of us in the southeast section of the county, and having them at Boys Ranch is going to be a huge, huge benefit to those that are out in the rural areas. And so, I'm excited to have them coming to Boys Ranch. It's a perfect fit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. Any other items from supervisors? I am going to actually have you call out item 44, Madam Clerk. Excuse me.
Okay. And we do have a couple of, we have at least one public comment for item nine, but we'll move on to 44. I already read that into the record. That's the introduction of the ordinance.
To revoke the cruising ordinance in Sacramento County. And I just want to say thank you to Supervisor Kennedy for getting this on the agenda. I think this anti-cruising ordinance is certainly a vestige of a time where, vestige from a time where we were not nearly as, I think, cognizant of the impacts of some of these kinds of ordinances. And I can tell you, just in my, in my prior life as a highway patrol officer, this wasn't an ordinance that amounted to anything. Didn't improve traffic safety, didn't make- Didn't improve traffic safety, didn't make our communities better, and all it did was, I think, serve to, you know, divide. So I appreciate, I'm, I'm highly supportive of initiating the ordinance to revoke this. So thank you Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, it looks like we have no further comments from the supervisors, so I'll turn to public comment on consent matters.
Okay, Amber, could you transfer the caller, please?
And this is for item nine.
No in-person comments for consent?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I might have overstepped. I don't think so.
Okay.
Hang on a minute. No.
Okay, thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Gail Bowen from the River Valley Times, and I'm calling about the Cal Fire Will Cal Fire hire people with a criminal record for positions at the Boys Ranch, particularly prior inmates who worked on Cal Fire crews who have since been released from prison? Hi, this is Gail Bowen.
Ma'am, does that conclude your comments?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay, so the board does have your, your comments.
They encourage that person to reach out to my office, and we can respond to that at supervisorfrost@saccounty.gov.
Okay, all right.
So I just want to also add that the caller, I think it's from the media, correct? So if the caller's still listening, encourage the caller to contact our Public Information Officer here at the county as well.
Okay, and we do have an in-person comment for item 39, and then we also have callers on item 39. So we'll take the in-person comment first, and if we could have Ms. Woolley come back down to the podium.
Yes, and I apologize, Flo, I should, I'll wait till, in the future, I'll wait till after all our comments up here on the dais before I call out any specific consent item for public comment.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Woolley, it's your turn now.
Hi, everyone. I'm talking about Agenda Item 39 on the consent calendar. I want to address the non-emergency emergency. This is about $15 million that can be better used to clean up the rivers, to help the homeless, to pay better wages to the in-home healthcare people, and to help with street repair that would help every one of our citizens. I just want to say that the draft copy of the agreement is not available at this time. That's unacceptable for a public comment venue. I can't even read what it is that we're, that you're going to be voting on, so the public is not able to review. Public health has milked the COVID-19 long past the two weeks to flatten the curve to two months, to two, to three years, and it's taken everyone else to figure out that this reaction was far worse than the illness. Legal counsel and the OES advised the board multiple times to continue this emergency so that they could apply for funding to pay for infrastructure, to mitigate non-emergency and other things. We do not want a repeat of that for COVID or any other pandemic. On top of that, the CDC is corrupt, and leveraging state-based public health programs is an extension of the CDC. There is no COVID emergency to warrant such an infrastructure expansion, and we don't want any more CDC money manipulating our local government. Again, it's better to spend this $15 million on the homeless, on the street repairs, and those poor, wonderful people that help our in-care home. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we will move to our phone calls, and so if you, Tamika, if you could transfer the first caller. We have about three calls on that. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Gabrielle with Stand Up Sacramento County, and my concern with this item is that a draft copy of the agreement is not available at this time. I've checked the whole agenda packet and could not find it as of last night. DHS, it says in the letter DHS is still in negotiations with the contractor and working to create the agreement document. Now, I know this board approved two weeks ago a contract without actually reading it, but this is $15 million, and I don't know if the whole $15 million is what DHS is slated to use, part of it, so it concerns me that this is even being considered beforehand. At the same time, even, even using the money to do public health infrastructure, I'm, I'm concerned about the overreach that occurred under the COVID emergency, the amount of people that were hired that they're trying to keep on to continue things going, especially with today we have on the agenda to end the emergency. So I know that they're looking to expand the infrastructure. I know personally that public health are already talking about how to spend this money for employees, and that this is to go through 2027. There's a lot of red flags in this with such a large dollar amount. In addition, the resolution states that the Director of Department of Health Services or a designated authorized to amend the agreement for non-monetary changes, monetary decreases to terminate or sign the agreement, to extend the term as needed, and to monetarily increase the total agreement amount by up to 10% of the total value. 10% of 15 million is 1.5 million, so that's, that's a lot of money for somebody to just be able to update. And so I have concerns on this, for this simply being a consent item. I think there's too much information missing, so I ask that you hold on this, either vote no or move it, so we can hear more. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, yes, good morning, this is Blanca. I was calling about item 39, and similar to other callers and in-person public comments, I have concerns about it too, given that we're not able to review the agreement, and the authority that it is giving the public health person, whoever it is at the time, to change the agreement, whatever it might be. So I would like to ask the board to not vote on this until the draft agreement is available and able to be reviewed by themselves and also by the public. I know that we've asked of this before, I think it was the last meeting, two weeks ago, there was a, an item that was voted on without even being read or accessible to the public, so I'd really appreciate it if you guys actually did what you're supposed to do and represent your constituents when we call in, when we show up, when we ask you, hey, please don't vote on this, because we haven't even seen it. Like, what do we know what's in there? What are we agreeing to? You know, who, who goes and buys a car and doesn't read the contract, you just signed for it? Who buys a house and doesn't read the agreements? I mean, this is like common sense. Please, show some common sense and respect to your constituents, the ones that you're supposed to represent. That's my comment.
Thank you. Next caller? And I'm going to close the queue now, and there's one other caller sitting with Alma, and we'll take that call, but this, we're closing the queue. On the record, closing because it's empty.
Great, thank you. Thank you. That's an easy call.
Oh, that caller dropped off. Alma, could you please transfer your caller? Thank you.
Can hear a pin drop in this place.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, good morning, Sacramento Board of Supervisors. My name is Sandy, and I'm a concerned Sacramento area citizen. I am calling in today to echo the concerns of the citizens that you have just heard now. We do not approve any more CDC money, and the emergency has ended, or just about to end. There's no need for this anymore. There are other concerns, other needs that the city could use these monies for, so I just want to echo those concerns and ask you to either vote no on it, or move it out to be discussed further and investigated further. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes your public comments. Let me just double check that no one snuck in, and that concludes your public comments for consent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any other supervisors queued up. That concludes consent. I would entertain a motion.
Who consent?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can, she's, so I think we need a second.
It would be easier if she didn't make the motion or the second, so that way I can cast her vote for the no. Thank you.
All right, so I'll look for a second.
I will second, and I just want to clarify, I thought you pulled item 39 earlier, so are we voting on that separately, or are we voting on that as a part of this?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, we can just take one vote, and I can...
Allow me to clear my name, Chair.
I was gonna, I'm catching on, I did it earlier, you noticed.
Better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent items, with the exception of Supervisor Frost on item 39. Please vote, well, record your vote.
Right, unanimous vote, and I will have the record reflect.
The record reflect that Supervisor Frost will no on item 39, okay.
Correct. And you have a couple of announcements for your consent matters now.
Okay, so now, yeah, we'll go back to the presentations on, those are items, which items are those?
Those are items five and six. I can read those into the record.
Please.
For item five, this is the authorization to appoint Heng Nguyen as registrar of voters, and for item six, this is the authorization to appoint Keith Goodrich as Director of Waste Management and Recycling.
And I think we have several folks in chambers here that are going to be here to celebrate these retirements along with us, so thank you for your patience as we got through the, the other agenda items.
So, thank you, Chair Desmond, and I've invited Ms. Nguyen to come up. I am really pleased to recommend, and thank you for approving her appointment as our new registrar of voters. She has been acting since August of 2022 and has been doing a fabulous job, did a great job on the general election. Heng has also been a key player in the Voters' Choice Act implementation as the largest pilot county in 2017. Since 2019, Heng successfully led complex elections through regular legislative changes and new mandates in the eighth-largest voting jurisdiction in the state. In 2022, Heng successfully implemented new federal language mandates required under the Voting Act. Throughout the years, Heng maintains great partnerships with the Departments of Technology, which really helps them do the good work that they do. She's co-chair of the California Association of Clerks and Election Officials. Heng is a collaborator and a cheerleader. She is an effective leader that will put her department first by working tirelessly to balance the lines between transparency and security. Heng boosts morale, provides opportunities for personal and professional growth, and advocates for the needs of her department. I know it's demonstrated by, I think, most of her entire team is here supporting her, so please join me in congratulating Ms. Nguyen on her appointment.
Thank you to our county executive, and congratulations, and now the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Heng Nguyen, and I am the incoming registrar of voters. I would like to start by thanking Anne Edwards and the members of the board for your continued confidence in my ability to lead this department exceptionally well. I would like to extend my gratitude to David Villanueva, who has mentored me throughout the years. I would like to thank my family, because without their support and their sacrifices, I would not be who I am or where I am today. They are built-in babysitters, and I love that. I would also like to thank the exceptional team at the Department of Voter Registration and Elections. There are really not enough words that I can say to thank them for their collaborative efforts and their dedication to administering free and fair elections with accuracy and integrity, and for that, thank you. As the acting registrar of voters, I successfully led the department through a historic midterm election, where we navigated the challenges of redistricting. We implemented a new federally mandated language, and we created record-breaking number of ballot types and election materials, and timely with zero errors. I am honored for this opportunity, and I am committed to continuing this, to build upon the momentum as a registrar of voters, and am committed to continuing to administer elections with security, transparency, and integrity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Heng. Don't leave yet, Heng. There's a few supervisors in the queue who would like to make some comments, so you'll have to stand there for a few moments. I'll turn first to Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, congratulations, Heng. I have the utmost confidence in your ability to continue to lead our Elections Office, and your mission as registrar is certainly something that I think we've all had a chance to reflect on in recent years. It's definitely a post that comes with a lot of new challenge, I think, and that may be putting it mildly, not just here in Sacramento County, but across our, across our nation. And for someone to step up and be willing to lead, certainly in the face of some of those new challenges, I think speaks volumes about not just your ability to do that, but your courage to do that. So I really want to underscore that particular character trait that has not lost on me. I don't think it's lost on any of us, and we're very fortunate to have you. So again, congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Congratulations, first of all. I just want to say that when, when I first got elected eight years ago, calls of complaints flooded in after every election. And I will tell you that the work of your predecessor Courtney and yourself, I don't get those calls anymore, and that's a good thing. You know, the work that you do is vitally important. You guys do it, you know, you work hard, and I'm talking to your whole staff now. You, you work hard, put in, you know, crazy hours during peak times. You're doing it very well, and under unusual circumstances for the last few years, and unfortunate circumstances. People should not be afraid to go to work, people should not feel threatened because they're coming to work and doing the people's business, but unfortunately, throughout the country in your line of work, that has been the case in the last few years, and that's unfortunate. I know that you have the support of this board, you obviously have the support of Ms. Edwards and her executive team, and I, you know, congratulate you and look forward to working with you. I will tell you also, as a consumer, I think Mr. Human... I will tell you also, as a consumer, I think Mr. Hume and I spent more time in your office last year than anyone else up here. And I will tell you that not just the service that I got, you know, granted, they know who you are when you walk in, but I watched, you know, I've spent a lot of time in that office, and I watched how your staff treats people. People they agree with, people they don't agree with, people who are being reasonable, people who aren't being unreasonable, are reasonable. And, you know, the professionalism, the courtesy by which your staff deals with the public is really admirable, and it makes this county look good. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Frost.
Hang, I just want to congratulate you. You know, your predecessor was hard act to follow, and you stepped in and took the reins and did an excellent job. I know we've been through a lot over the last couple of years. There's a lot going on, and it has not really nothing to do with your staff or you folks. I think it has to do with the environment. There is a lot going on. Over 1,000 people nationwide have been arrested and convicted of election fraud. There are, my understanding, 15 counties in California that are investigating the election and the machines. Some have opted to discontinue the machines. And in my district, my people have questions about it, and you have faced those questions head-on. And you've even gone so far as to say, Sue, if you find something, bring it, and we will investigate it. We will look into it. And so I'm sure we will have more conversations as we move forward. It's not like it's going away. But what I really appreciate is your leadership and your strong commitment to election integrity and managing the elections in a very transparent and, in a transparent way that gives people confidence in our elections. That's what we need, want, and need. We want to have confidence. And so I think you're the right person for that seat, and I'm thrilled that you have that position, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, congratulations, and second of all, thank you. And I say that in kind of reference to what Supervisor Kennedy was referencing, as far as one who has just had extensive interface with your office. Your staff is incredibly professional, and the public-facing demeanor with which they deal with people who are there to conduct business, professionally, transparently, openly, all of the things that you called out is really to be commended. And also, the fact that you stepped up in a time of turmoil, really, because it was in the throes of the midterm season that you assumed the interim role. And so my only, it's not even a criticism, it's an offer of help, is that the excruciating pace with which we learned the results, as one who was on the receiving end of that, anything I can do to help, whether that's, if it's space concerns, if it's staffing concerns, if it's technology, whatever needs to be done to get that process a little more fast and efficient without sacrificing the transparency and the accuracy, I'm here to offer that support. But congratulations and welcome to the role.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Certainly, you speak from experience better than any of us most recently. So, Hang, I'll just pile on and, you know, I'm not going to repeat what's been said, but just congratulations. And I know both the commitment to the customer service, and, you know, I have no doubt that you and your staff, you take it as your sacred duty to ensure election integrity in Sacramento County. And I have a very high level of confidence that if you ever saw anything, you or your staff that interfered with that, you would certainly bring it to the fore so we could address it. So that certainly helps me sleep better at night, and I'm just thrilled that you're in this position, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will go back to item six, so one more appointment, and then we get to the retirements.
Yes, yes, thank you. We've got people coming and going, and that's the way it works.
I can't keep track.
So once again, I am really thrilled to recommend the appointment of Keith Goodrich for the Director of the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. He too has been acting since about August, yeah, since August, and doing a fabulous job. Keith has over 35 years of experience as a civil engineer practicing in solid waste management, including 27 years with our Department of Waste Management and Recycling right here, and serving as interim director since August of 2022. He's a registered civil engineer and has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Santa Clara University. Keith's primary actions in recent years has focused on staff development, organizational restructuring, workforce culture change, and leading the team in strategic planning for and implementation of the waste and recycling programs such as weekly organics collections. You know, one of the things that pleases me about the last statement I made is Keith, and I actually should have said the same thing for Hang, is really committed to the organizational culture change that we are working on as a county, and in fact, was working on it in the department. You know, as we already, when we were getting started, they were already doing things in this department. So I'm really happy to have you on board, Keith, and look forward to continuing to work with you. And so please join me in congratulating Keith.
Okay, Keith, the floor is yours to talk trash.
First of all, good morning. Thank you, Chair Desmond, members of the board. I'm truly honored to be here today. And I want to thank also our county executive, Ann Edwards, our deputy county executive, Dave DeFanti, for the trust that you've all put into me to lead this department. It's really an exciting time for us, as we're implementing sustainability initiatives. And I'm just so grateful for the dedicated staff that we have that day in and day out are out there, they're out there right now, cleaning up our community and serving us so well. I'm also very thankful for our leadership team. Some of them are here, ask them to wave, because they're getting buried in the crowd. They are just so talented, innovative, and hardworking. It just brings me joy to work with them every day. I will say together that we are committed to continuing outstanding customer service, environmental stewardship, and just a commitment to our employees' development and their safety. So again, thank you, and I really look forward to serving in this position.
Thank you, Keith. Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Keith. I don't talk to the people in your department as often, but I want to say, over the past year, I think you have, there's been a lot going on. And I understand the challenges that you're up against, not only with, you know, the organic waste and everything that's going on, but the public education and changing the way we do things. And I want to congratulate you for the position. I've heard nothing but great things about you from people that I hold in very high regard. And so I'm excited to have you there and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, Keith, well, congratulations. Oh, Supervisor Hume.
Well, I was just going to say, I was just going to say, I had a mentor of mine that explained that, you know, the nuts and bolts of government is often overlooked. But if you want to have your voicemail box and your in-mail box blow up, stop picking up people's trash. And so, yeah, thank you, thank you. And I really appreciate hearing that you were already working on implementing the organizational culture change. I think that's such an important thing, and it's really been a refreshing thing to experience as a new member sitting on this dais. And so congratulations for your appointment and good luck in your new role.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Yeah, it is interesting how, most people, their interface with government is either going to be, you know, calling about a pothole, or it's what happens with my trash pickup, recycling, organic waste pickup. And it's just, it seems like such a simple thing, but it really sends a message to the public, creates an image in their mind. So, I mean, to have your customer service focus, Keith, is, I really appreciate that. And the fact that you're a fellow Bronco, Santa Clara Bronco, with me and our governor is also, you know, an added bonus, certainly. So thank you very much for all you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the timed matters, an hour behind, item 51.
Okay, it is with honor to read this into the record. Presentation of resolution congratulating Ben Lamera upon the occasion of his retirement.
Okay, Ben, come on up.
Thank you, Flo. Good morning, Chair Desmond. Still morning, yes. Chair members, members of the board, supervisors. My name is David Villanueva. I'm the deputy county executive over administrative services. And today is kind of bittersweet for me. We welcome in Hang, and Ben is leaving my team. So, but we're very honored to recognize Ben today. I do have the privilege of presenting the well-deserved Board of Supervisors' resolution to honor the retirement of a county employee and the director of finance, Ben Lamera. Just a little bit about Ben and his team, and the countless contributions that Ben has made to the county. Ben began his public service as an auditor for the Department of Finance in December of 1989. And for those accountants out there, that was 33 fiscal years ago. In 1989 to 2010, Ben managed multiple units within the Auditor-and-Controller's Division. And then in 2010, he was promoted to Assistant Auditor Controller, where he managed various teams, including internal audits, tax accounting, systems control and reconciliation, payment services, general accounting, and accounting and financial reporting. In January of 2016, Ben was asked, was again promoted to Director of Finance, where he began leading the Department of Variety of Cost Savings and Innovative Initiatives. In addition to his work with the county, Ben has had various positions on statewide committees for the California State Auditor-and-Controller's Association. And then also within the county, he has served in the County Executive's Audit Committee, the Treasury Oversight Committee, the Deferred Compensation Committee, and he has been appointed to the SCURS Board as an ex officio member. I wanted to share some information that is not widely known about the enormous responsibility that, and the success the Department of Finance has had. Charing, or channeling in Chair Desmond's tooting our own horn thing, I think Ben's group doesn't necessarily get a chance to show the enormity of which his team provides. So each year since Ben has been the Director of Finance, GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association, has awarded a certificate of excellence for Sacramento County's presentation of our annual comprehensive financial report. In addition, annually, his team processes 475,000 property tax records and bills over $2.6 billion in revenue. And not all that is county of Sacramento revenue. That's shared amongst various local districts also. His investment team manages over $7 billion of investments in our pool and other investment funds. His CUB team processes 1.9 million individual payments, totaling $468 million of revenue for our county's utility services. And annually, the business licensing team processes 13,000 business licenses applications. And lastly, but not least, the Treasury team processes 1.8 million transactions for $17.6 billion in payments on an annual basis. So I'm always impressed when we talk about what are the magnitude of responsibilities that our county departments have. And Ben's group and his team are no exception to that. So Ben, on behalf of the county of Board of Supervisors, County Executive Ann Edwards and her executive team, and myself, thank you very much for the many years of dedicated service you've had. It's truly been an honor to work with you and have you part of my team. I know your team, your peers, along with myself, will miss you terribly. And I hope that you will take this opportunity to play many, many, many rounds of golf, which he's a, plays a lot of golf. Enjoy your family, which I know is important to you, and partake in the many opportunities retirement has to offer. So thank you again for your 33 years, or 33 fiscal years of dedication to Sacramento County, and I wish you the best. And again, congratulations on your retirement. And I know he has his wife here, Melinda, and his team. Most of this half of the room, I think, is his team.
Terrific. Well, Ben, I'll turn over to you to say a few words. Thank you, David.
Well, good morning, Chair Desmond and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. I come before you this morning with considerable amount of gratitude. To the board, I thank you for entrusting me over the last seven years with the $7 billion in treasury investments, the $2.6 billion in property tax collections, and $7.8 billion in budget appropriations. And thank you for your continued support as I sought to account for, report on, and safeguard Sacramento County's financial assets. The responsibilities of this position, I never took lightly. Your continued support, your continued commitment to provide this county, your continued commitment to provide this county with fiscal stability, security, and growth was a commitment I shared, and I am pleased with the accomplishments we have achieved to that end. To the county executive, Ann Edwards, thank you for the care and support you have brought to this county. And thank you for your efforts in pursuing a transformative vision that Sacramento County employment provided both desirable and enriching opportunities, and the county community is safe, healthy, and prosperous. I know this county has and will continue to benefit greatly from your leadership. Thank you, Flo.
You're welcome.
And to Deputy County Executive David Villanueva, you're the first, it's the first time I actually had a supervisor that was actually younger than me. Not by much, but you know. But thank you for your guidance and for asking the tough questions that both challenged me and helped me grow in this position. I can truly say it has been a pleasure to work for you over these past few years. To my director of finance predecessors, Nancy Woolford, the county's last auditor, elected auditor controller, the late John Dark, the county's first appointed director of finance, Mark Norris, a mentor and a friend, Dave Irish and Julie Valverde, the ones that actually hired me into the county. I thank them for laying the framework for the efficient and effective collections, monitoring, reporting, and the disbursements of funds. To my fellow directors and also the deputy county executives, thank you for your support, your leadership, and your willingness to share your experiences, your expertise, and your knowledge to help me learn and grow as a county leader. Sorry. To my division chiefs and staff, thank you for your commitment to integrity and accuracy in maintaining the financial operations of the county. Through COVID pandemic, you all worked diligently to keep our office doors open, to ensure our continued service to the community. For financial reports, you continue to prepare and deliver the various financial reports on time and accurately. For collections, you have diligently pursued property tax bills, court-ordered debt, and utility billings with the utmost respect for customers and their individual situations. I have been both proud and humbled by your work and honored by what we have accomplished. Last night, I thought about the way those I work with have been a second family to myself and my own family. Many of you have witnessed big life events with me, such as marriage, the birth of my daughters, and the birth of my twin sons. You have listened to my stories and have looked at my pictures, and you have shared your stories and your pictures with me. Those times have helped me connect, helped connect us as staff and have carried us through the challenging work times. Many of you have also walked alongside myself and my family through darker days, days when we have lost love, those days that, when we have lost those that we loved, and we were trying to figure out what tomorrow would look like without them. Believe it or not, this workplace was more than a place to come each day and perform my duties. It was a time of refuge, a place where I received invaluable support and understanding. To each of you who showed me kindness and care during those moments, To each of you who showed me kindness and care during those moments, thank you. Your words and actions and the times when you said nothing about, and the times when you said nothing aloud but simply listened are an incredible part of the memories I take from this workplace. As I look towards retirement, I'm anxious. A world without this job is kind of scary. I'm also excited, excited to spend more time with my wife and children, extended family and friends. However, I have not only walked this life with a wonderful family, friends, and coworkers, I have walked this life with God, and for Him, I am most grateful. I do want to thank my late parents for providing me an opportunity through an education, through their guidance, and for their love and their encouragement. I also have my, I'd like to thank the rest of my family. My wife is here, so are my brothers Carl and Anthony, and my nephew, Marcel. Let's thank them for all their love, their support, and their encouragement during this
Well, okay, we have a few supervisors queued up here. We'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Ben, I remember when I first was elected, you were such a huge help. Sometimes it was just getting me to the right department. And it's hard because every time I turn around, another person is, another great person is leaving the county, and it's sad to see you go. But I'm happy for you. I hope you have a wonderful retirement. Thank you for your strong commitment to the county over time and for all the help that you've given us in District Four over the years. Best wishes.
Great, thank you.
And I hope you enjoy all that golf.[735.51][735.54](Laughter)
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I don't think it's lost on any of us, Ben, that that was probably a little difficult for you to get through. And usually, you're at the podium in front of us, and you're smooth as silk in your presentations. And I think it's testament the fact that you're a very humble individual. And I think it comes through, not just in your words today, that I know you prepared, but certainly in your 33 years of service to this county and our residents. You know, I've had a chance now to work with you for a little over a dozen years, serving on this board. And we oftentimes, as you know, have county employees that are before us, receiving either acknowledgement of their growing tenure or their retirements. And typically, it's measured in orders of decades. So that really tells the supervisor that there is just such a great deal of pride amongst our roughly 13,000 employees here in Sacramento County. And again, it's not lost on me that today, with the words you've expressed, and quite frankly, the difficulty that it was for you to get through, really just emphasizes, again, just your humility. And that's something that I would hope whomever is going to follow in your footsteps is going to really take to heart, because I think that's, you know, really the essence of what we're all trying to do, which is to serve. You know, if you're here to do it for your ego, whether you're a civil servant or elected, you're here for the wrong reason. And the fact that you've taken great strides to thank those that are important to you, both personally and professionally, again, I think really is emblematic of the kind of individual that you are, and I wish you the best and hope that your handicap comes down, so.[876.31][876.34](Laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. See, our county exec is queued up, but I'll go to Supervisor Hume first.
Thank you, Chair. Well, we didn't get the opportunity to work together long, but what little interaction we had, I really commend you on your professionalism. Is this your wife back here in the audience behind you?
No, she's up here.
She's up here. Well, this woman back here was very moved by your speech.[902.51][902.54](Laughter) And I couldn't tell if it was because of the kind words you were saying, or the fact that you weren't going to get up and go to the office anymore, and so I thought it might be your wife. But, no, thank you. I would assume it would be the former, obviously. Thank you for your service.
If you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
That is actually my Deputy Director, Joyce Renison.[929.67][929.70](Laughter)
I see. So it's fear and trepidation of what the office is going to look like without you.
The big shoes to put.
It's good to know that it's in good hands, but she's obviously very worried, so. But no, I want to echo the comments here and just hope that you have many years of keeping in the short grass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Now I'll turn it to our county exec.
So Ben, this is actually going to be harder for me than I thought. I really want to thank you for everything. You know, when you talk about money, we talk a lot about programs and services and all of the things that are so important that we do every day in the county. And I had a colleague in my first job with the county as an entry-level mental health manager who just harangued me, because I was all like, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, programs, program services. And she says, you can't do any of that without the money. And so you need to understand the way the money works so that we can do the good work that we do. And so you and your team provide that service for us, which I'm very grateful for. But I think the thing that I'm maybe even more grateful for is that Ben really exemplifies the values and the culture that we are trying to develop in the county. As I listen to him talk about his county staff and colleagues as family, you know, that's something that Ben created because of who he is. And I can assure you that the same level of, I would argue, love and support that you got during your dark time, I got from you and your wife during my recent loss. So Ben is really a remarkable guy. He's got a great family, and I'm really happy for you that you get to go play golf and spend time with your family and your friends. And I just wish you much peace and joy as you move forward to this next phase of your life, and I will miss you greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
And so Ben, the last word here, you know, I obviously don't know you as well as a number of my colleagues here, but clearly you are loved and you are going to be so missed, both from, because of your technical expertise and what you've done for Sacramento County, but because of what you've done for your staff, everybody who has worked with you. And I think, you know, Supervisor Serna's comments are right on point. I mean, it really is a testament, I think, to the county and the family feeling in this county, you know, your longevity here. And so thank you for that, and thank you for the legacy that you're leaving behind. And I wish you the best of luck and Godspeed in retirement.
Wow, they weren't kidding.[1142.33][1142.35](Laughter)
Ben, don't leave. I have your resolution.[1149.33][1149.35](Laughter)
Don't leave without your resolution, Ben. And it strikes me, your deputy's response is a little like Pat Hume's response when he realized he had to replace Don Natoli.[1160.01][1160.04](Laughter) The pressure, the fear. Okay, I'm ready. Let's move on to item 52.
All right, item 52, another honor, Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Deborah L. Ryans Upon the Occasion of Her Retirement After 39 Years of County Service.
Okay, well, good morning. We'll turn it over to you, Ron.
All right. Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board. It is definitely a, really a great opportunity, and I'm so excited for Deborah. It's kind of a hard time for me. Deborah's been by my side for six years, so I'm going to try to get through this thing also. So I'm going to kind of go through pieces of the resolution, going through 39 years. So I certainly cannot cover it all, but Deborah began working with Sacramento County on March 26, 1984, as a typist clerk in the accessor's office. She then started working for the Department of Systems and Data Processing, now DTEC. And in October of 1988, she promoted to typist clerk III confidential with the treasurer tax collector's office. She returned to the accessor's office in 1990. In January of 1995, Deborah promoted to the Board of Supervisors as the Executive Secretary to the Department of General Services. In November of 1998, Deb transferred to the Public Works as the Executive Secretary to the Administrator. And in September of 2004, she transferred to Water Quality. In January 2005, she worked in the general fund, on the general fund in the planning department. And in September of 2005, she returned to county engineering as the Executive Secretary. Most importantly, in 2008, she began her role as the Executive Secretary to the Director of the Department of Transportation. In her position, she managed all of the office, everything board agenda-related, and has been instrumental in our department for many, in many ways. Deborah hosted the 29th Annual Public Works Secretarial Seminar in Sacramento. It was one of the most memorable seminars of her career. Deborah also co-founded the Forum for People of Color in 1999. It was recognized via this board, which was presented to the organization on May 29, 2001. She also created the International Fair in June 2003 to promote and educate county employees and the public on the multicultural diversity here in the county. This event was held on the south side of this building for seven years. Deborah is the mother of five, the grandmother of 15, the great-grandmother of one. She plans to spend her retirement taking culinary classes, cake decorating classes, and learn American Sign Language. She also plans to travel and do community work at her church and for local nonprofits and spend time with her grandchildren and enjoy the best years of her life. As I said, Deborah has been by my side for six years, protecting me, watching over Sacramento County Department of Transportation.
Protecting you from what exactly?
From everything.
From us.
That's what people know, sitting at, when you sit in my office and hear people call and hear her say, but she really does watch over all of us at Sacramento County. She often comes into my office knowing and certainly having access to all my emails and she knows everything that happens in SACDOT. So oftentimes, she'll come into my office and say, Ron, this is what I think you should do. What I've learned from Deborah is that her advice is always spot-on. And it's spot-on because it comes from a place of faith, love and kindness, always. And really importantly, just a sheer deep love for Sacramento County and for the Department of Transportation. I don't know anyone that loves the county or Department of Transportation more than Deborah. Deborah often tells me, as she drives around with her grandkids, that she points out all the time that, we built this, we built this. She tells their grandkids that all the time. And people at SACDOT know how much of a significant role she's played in that. So I do want to say at SACDOT, we do things Deb's way. And so with, in addition to the resolution that I'd like to present to Deb on 39 years of service, we have the resolution, I'd also like to present her with the Deb's Way street sign.
Nice.
Because we at SACDOT do that.[1497.31][1497.34](Applause) It's truly a sentiment to how much we eat the SACDOT family, and we love and appreciate 39 years of amazing service. So with that, I want to let Deb say, well, actually, take pictures and then let Deb say a few words.
You know, Ron, after that introduction, Deb, do you want a job?[1523.01][1523.04](Laughter)
To the members of the Board and to the newest member, Supervisor Hume, I just had the privilege of being with your predecessor, Supervisor Natoli, on Thursday for my retirement party. He's been, he was with our county for 44 years, and I worked for him, I mean, worked with him at the Board when I was the deputy clerk under Cindy Turner, our former clerk of the Board. Now it's a pleasure for me to see my little sis, I call her, be the clerk of the Board here today. And it's just a privilege for me to have grown up in this county, because I've been here since I was 26 years old. So it's just been a blessing for me to work for 10 departments. And then as I heard you guys introduce Hang today, I might as well say 11, because I've worked with the voter registration department for almost 20 years. I started off as a clerk in the elections and then an inspector. And I believe that our county has one of the best voter registers in this, in the whole state of California, because I know exactly how we work and operate when we run those elections. And so it's been a privilege for me to be able to do that. And so congratulations to our newest voter register. And then I want to say that having grown up here and worked for the departments that I've worked in, it's been a privilege and a blessing for me, because I know that when I first started, the county was not as big as it is now. We didn't even have Elk Grove. And I remember so much about, even when DTEC was built downtown, and when I was working in systems data processing, I worked in this basement, and then we went to 1238 F Street. And then the red one, as we called Russ Waltrip, who was the director at that time, he told me that we were going to move over here to downtown where DTEC is now located. But he said, Deb, we're going to be in the building with the coroner's office, because the system that we had back then was so large that we had to have something cold in order to maintain, to store that big mainframe computer system that they had. And I was scared to death. I was like, no way. I'm not going to go to work and walk by those bodies. And he was just really teasing me about that. It took a long time to come into fruition, and by then I had moved on to other departments, thank goodness. And I just, I just really remember asking our former retirement officer, John Deskamp, if I could retire when I was 45, and he said no. So I've stuck with it, and I've been able to work for so many different department heads. And I really, really loved Public Works. When I came to work for Warren Harada, who is no longer with us, I just really loved Warren, because his vision for Public Works was that he treated us as an agency committed to excellence, and we really were. So I've learned so much from him. And then to be able to move around the county and be able to get into training programs that allowed me to even get to where I am now. I wanted to just promote up one more step before I left, but God had different plans for me. And so I'm just grateful that even though I didn't get to be in the leadership capacity of just being one more step up, that he did allow me to do the 2014 Public Works Secretarial Seminar here, which was one of the best ones this state has ever seen, I must say. And then to be able to host the International Fair and celebrate all the multicultural diversity that SAC County has. We are one of the most diverse counties in the state of California, of the 58 counties that we have here. So that was a gift, and it was a blessing for me to be able to do that. Of course, you can't do it without a team, so I thank everybody that worked with us. But I'm just saying, now that I'm able to retire, it seemed like this year was just the year that I was pushing for. I was waiting for my birthday on January 10, and then I got sick. So just took a little bit extra for me to be able to even get here today, but I'm telling you, God is good, because he gave me the strength to be able to walk in here, to be able to see. see everybody, celebrate with my colleagues, my friends. Truly SAC County is my first family outside of my family. I'm thankful for my children and my grandchildren and every last one of my friends who support me. I do not call them just friends, I call them family because every day, when you come into this county, when you come into your office, the first faces you see, your coworkers, you want them to be somebody who you can get along with, who you can say, that's really my work daughter, that's my sister, that's my brother. You really want to be able to say those things. And I am so thankful that I've had bosses who I've been able to go into their homes. Ron, I know his family. I've had Thanksgiving dinner with them. I worked for Mike Penrose, he's family to me. Warren Harada was family. I mean, everybody that I work with, they're family. And so I'm just going to be sad, but I'm happy that I'm able to spend some time doing the things I love, like golf, travel, take the culinary classes, learn American Sign Language, which I'm encouraging Ron to take also. And then just to be able to just enjoy life. So I thank you for your time. Welcome Supervisor Hume, you've got some big shoes to fill. And thank you Phil Serna for being with me on my, on when we did host the 2014 Public Works Seminar, thank you for being there. Thank you Supervisor Desmond, you might hear from me, you are my supervisor. Thank you Supervisor Frost.
You're in trouble dude, no kidding.
I remember when you came into the office and certainly Supervisor Kennedy, thank you all.
Thank you, Deborah. You might as well stay up here at the podium, a few supervisors will have a few words to say. I'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you Chair. Let me just start by saying despite assertions to the contrary, Elk Grove did exist in 1984. I was in school there at the time, but I won't tell you what grade because otherwise the chair would think even less of me for how young I am. And I'll say this, that my predecessor put in 44 years of service and he says only those who have a special touch go past the 40-year mark. So I salute you for putting in 39 and saying that that was good enough. And thank you so much for your service. I hope you learn to create some beautiful dishes and...
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first of all, congratulations Deb on a terrific career with multiple agencies that you cited in some detail. And I guess the thing I want to take advantage of in this moment right now is to ask you a question in addition to congratulating you. Because you obviously have a tremendous amount of pride in your county and in the ethos of public service. So what would you, what would you, what advice would you give a young person, a 26-year-old young woman who's debating whether or not she wants to start her career in public service for the county of Sacramento?
I've already had the privilege to tell some at the recent APWA luncheon that are working here in the county that I encourage them to just come into the county and look at what they can do, whatever job they do, do it to the best of their ability and look forward to any of the other positions that they would like to promote to and try to get those skills and the training that's necessary for them to be able to promote into those positions. And then also to try to stay away from negative people, but always be looking for the most positive experiences that they can have. That's going to get them somewhere and to treat each other the way that they would like to be treated always.
Excellent advice. We are going to miss you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost.
Deb, I'm going to miss you also. I remember before I, during my campaign, I think I, Mike Penrose was nice enough to meet with me and tell me, give me the scoop on the roads in the county so that I could better approach my debates and figure out how to win the contest. And you were that face in the office that I saw and I never forgot you. You're so sincere and so kind. And I was watching Ron while you were talking and it's obvious how special you are to your peers. And I want to wish you all the best. I'll be praying for healing and peace and joy for you. So best wishes.
Thank you Supervisor Frost. And Deb, yes, congratulations and thank you for all you've done. It sounds like you're going to be very busy with your family. And I'm so glad you're a constituent and now we can really have some of these heart-to-heart conversations about DOT because, you know, Ron's already looking nervous about me having these conversations with you.
She reads his emails.
That's right. So thank you so much and congratulations. One more round of applause. Okay, let's move on. We are at item 53.
Okay, and I do want to state for the record that I'm going to amend this title. This is to recognize February as therapeutic recreation month and adopt the resolution. You'll be presenting and adopting the resolution.
Okay, thank you Flo. And turn it over to our parks director.
Hello, good morning. I am here to tell you all about therapeutic recreation services and bring forward a resolution honoring the fact that it is Recreation Therapy Month this month of February. I want to go over some of the benefits of recreation therapy. I'm sure you're all aware, but recreation therapy promotes leisure independence and optimal leisure lifestyle. It helps us develop healthy living strategies, improve our physical and cognitive abilities, increase confidence and self-esteem, foster greater involvement in the community, strengthen interpersonal skills and relationships, improve coping and adoption skills, enhance our overall well-being, encourage a greater sense of accomplishment, and realize the benefits of a healthy leisure lifestyle. Sacramento County Regional Parks has been proud to offer a therapeutic recreation services program since 1975. Our programs include virtual programming, special events, sports training, day trips, classes, overnight travel, camps, and outdoor activities and adventures. I wanted to do a couple of bragging things for 2022 on what we've accomplished. We've had 8,952 participant experiences and 332 programs offered. We were the recipient of $140,000 donation from Epi's Wellness Foundation for our future program development. Our Sacramento County Chargers, which is our Special Olympics team, has 444 athletes train and compete for a variety of sports, which includes basketball, track, swimming, softball, soccer, bowling, and floor hockey. In addition to that, our TRS program has hosted two internships in 2022 for recreation therapy students. That's a 14-week program, one from SAC State, Stingers Up, and one from Brigham Young. We had new programs and events that we did in 2022, which include movie marathon days, horse races in Berkeley, step-by-step painting, Indiana Jones Adventure Night, pop-up programs, and a new twist on our holiday program, Wrap Up Your Shopping. Well, we had a shopping trip and then we did the wrapping. I hate wrapping, so I can imagine that would have been a great thing to get that done. We have extended travel programs. Our participants went to Philadelphia, spent Memorial Day weekend in Donner Lake where they got snowed in. They did tent camping on the Russian River, an overnight camp at Monte Toian in Aptos, a road trip on the Blue Ridge Parkway through North Carolina and Virginia, and in Halloween they went to Disneyland. And this is a small but mighty program. We only have two full-time therapeutic recreation employees. We have several part-time program staff and a large number of dedicated volunteers. But both of our permanent staff are designated as certified therapeutic recreation specialist. That means they went above and beyond. They are qualified and certified through the National Council of Therapeutic Recreation Certification. It requires a bachelor's degree or higher from accredited university, a formal internship, and the passing of a national certification examination. So kudos to them. And they are here in the audience. Please stand up. And before we end this item, we have a small video. And this video came from a video class that they, our, some of our participants just completed. And I know we have the lead actress here in the audience. So please stand up and wave. We're very excited to have you here. So if you guys could start the video, that would be fantastic. In a world without recreation, a young woman sits bored, watching TV. No hobbies or interests to help her pass the time. Upon falling asleep in her chair, she gets introduced in her dreams to a variety of different hobbies and recreation activities. Follow along on her journey through optional ways to make friends, experience fun, and see the world, all while living her best life with recreation.
Let me teach you about history, young lady. Four score and seven years ago, I issued emancipation proclamation, which warned the Confederate troop that they have to get rid of slaves in the US.
Where am I?
What was that? That's here.
Yeah, check out this cool crystal, isn't it awesome?
I think that's cool.
Yeah, I found it. Awesome.
How's Mosquitos in that? Only had more bears for Mosquitos than that. Man, that's a good comic. I'm happy.
Excuse me, come here, gimme. My leg.
No, you're right on time. Where are you going?
I'm going to call a doctor to see my dad, so I can feel a little quickness.
Okay, go on. Next place. Oh, wait. Where are you going?
Look, Carolina.
Okay, go on.
Great, my next model's here.
Take a seat. Okay, go down. Perfect, hold on. What are you doing?
Look, Carolina.
Okay, go on.
Great, my next model's here.
Take a seat. Okay, go down. Perfect, hold on. What are you doing?
Because I have...
Yes.
What are you looking for?
Lego piece.
What does it look like?
This.
Hmm, I don't know. I have the name table.
Doing new things with friends.
Keep it going.
You might be saying to yourself, how do I benefit from TRS? It's because I get to hang out with my people and have a good time, be myself.
I like to go to new places, have fun, and be with people like me and not be judged.
Fun, going to places.
You know, friends and being more independent.
I benefit from TRS by being creative and being myself.
Feels like I am part of a group.
Okay, can the house, be with people.
Less screen time and more people time.
Feeling happy and seeing old friends and meeting new friends.
I've got close to TR Services.
TR Services, how may I help you?
I'd like to have some programs.
We're very proud of our therapeutic recreation services program. And again, if you guys just stand up, you can imagine the number of hours that they spend providing these programs to everyone and it's a phenomenal program.
Yes, please stand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Liz. Before, any, I don't see any supervisors queued up. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Do not.
Okay, I'll turn it to our county exec.
I just want to acknowledge this team. I had the lovely opportunity to meet them several weeks ago at a recognition event for staff in the Parks Department. And I was just so enthused by their enthusiasm. I mean, I have never met a smaller, mightier team that just loves their work so much. So the county residents truly benefit from all the work that you do and thank you and thank you for the lovely chat a few weeks ago.
Thank you. Thank you Ann. And yes, when I had my briefing with Ann, she told me that. She said she just could not believe how much you love the work that you do and your passion certainly shows. And thank you for the video and the star of the video. It's just, it's inspiring and we could not, certainly could not do this without all of you. And you are doing a tremendous service to folks in Sacramento County. So thank you all so much. And I'll look to my colleagues for a motion to support some of this. Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Serna, second from Supervisor Hume to approve the resolution recognizing February as therapeutic recreation month.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you again. And we look forward to hearing all your accomplishments over the next year and hearing from you again next year with a new video.
Yeah, the sequel.
The sequel, that's right. Part two, thank you. All right, enough of the fun stuff. Now we have to move on to the business matters. Item 54.
Okay, item 54 is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Anton Mosaic.
Okay, thank you Flo.
Are you saying this isn't fun?
Okay, well, I'm saying the bar is set high for you to make this one fun.
No offense, no offense taken. Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering, here to present this item. And we also have staff from DOT if any questions arise. So the Anton Mosaic Multifamily Project is located at 7243 Power Inn Road, approximately 750 feet south of Florin Road, and proposes 194 units. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated Sacramento County. And as a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. And in response to this request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on January 13th. Currently, the project site consists of a single parcel in the safety light only benefit category and has an annual assessment of $2.56. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light benefit category for non-residential parcels and based on current rate... And based on current rates, the service charge for this fiscal year will be $496.12. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony and objections and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Don't see any supervisors in the queue to speak. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any objections or protests to the proposed charge?
So we do not have any public comments, so we'll close that. And then I'll open the ballot and tabulate that for you.
Okay.
So the public comment period is closed now. Okay, we have received one ballot. This is from the legal owner power in Sacramento LP, parcel number 05100300010000, site address 7243 Power Inn Road, Sacramento, California. And they are in favor.
Okay. So seeing no majority protest, any public, so there's no public comment, that's closed. Any other comments or questions from supervisors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Quick, I apologize. I do need to read in fill-ins to the resolution.
Oh, sorry, okay, yes, please.
Just before you vote. So in Section 2 of the resolution, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe.
And with that, I will move for staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, first and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, item 55.
Item 55 is the termination of proclamation of local state of emergency and termination of proclamation of local public health emergency for the novel coronavirus epidemic COVID-19 respiratory illness.
Okay, let's see. Good morning, Mary Jo. And start with Mary Jo and then Dr. Kay.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Desmond and members of the board. On March 10, 2020, the Board of Supervisors ratified a proclamation of a state of local emergency for a novel coronavirus disease epidemic COVID-19, and that emergency has remained in effect. The governor waived the requirement for the Board of Supervisors to review the need to continue the local emergency for the novel coronavirus disease every 60 days. And that proclamation would remain in place until terminated by the Board of Supervisors by resolution. The Office of Emergency Services has been coordinating reimbursements on behalf of departments, on behalf of the county. To date, total claims submitted are $40.9 million, and the county has received $10.4 million. Even as the proclamation of emergency terminates, we will continue to work to recover expenditures on behalf of the county. While the COVID-19 disease is endemic in the community and emergency protective measures undertaken in response to the local emergency caused by COVID-19 respiratory illness are no longer needed, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors terminate the proclamation of both the local state of emergency and the proclamation of local public health emergency. Further, this action is consistent with the action by the governor of California to terminate the state of emergency today, February 28. We are available, I'll let Dr. Casiri speak, and then we're available for any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Supervisor Serna has a comment, but we'll wait till after, Dr. Kay, after your presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer. And today, I will review some of the expected changes following the end of the health emergency. But first, I want to say thank you to all the people who worked and assisted us in this response. First, I want to thank the public health staff that worked tireless long hours to monitor the pandemic and to provide services to the community. I also want to thank the Board of Supervisors for approving the funding and for your support throughout the pandemic, and also for trusting me to lead this response. I also want to thank the CEO, Ann Edwards, and the CEO's office for the support. We processed an enormous amount of requests during the pandemic, and various county offices and departments provided assistance. These included the clerk of the board, county council, the Departments of Health Services, Environmental Management, the Office of Emergency Services, Personnel Services, General Services, Code Enforcement, Human Assistance, Finance, and the Law Enforcement Communicable Disease Advisory Committee, or what we call the LEGDAC. We couldn't have done the work without the help and support of the community. So I want to acknowledge and thank all our community partners for the help with setting up testing sites, vaccination sites, and getting assistance out and information out to the community. And these partners included Sierra Health Foundation and the 40 or so community-based organizations that formed the SAC COLAB, all the hospital systems, UC Davis, Kaiser, Dignity, and Sutter, and the Hospital Council, the California National Guard, Sacramento Medical Reserve Corps, the pharmacies, especially Poochies, Rite Aid, and Safeway, the County Office of Education and the school district superintendents, nurses, and staff, the universities, Sac State and Cal North State, the SAC Mobile Integrated Health Unit, the fire districts and ambulance units, Urgent Care Now and Equivac, the SAC Republic FC, the Sacramento Kings, and I hope they continue their winning streak, the City of Sacramento and the Save Coalition, the COVID Community Stakeholders Group, Cal Expo, the public libraries, and the Mexican consulate, the Marshallese Community Organization, Del Paso Heights Neighborhood Organization, and the UC Davis Center for Reducing Disparities and Move It Up Project. We had about 13 community testing sites, and these included Asian sites at Asian Resources, Chabola Community Center, Cordova Neighborhood Church, La Familia Maple Neighborhood Center, Liberty Towers Church, the Robertson Community Center, St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, South Sacramento Christian Center, Oak Hills Church, TETE Pediatric Health, and there are numerous other CBOs and community champions. And I probably don't have the time to be able to name them all personally, but I wanted to just thank everybody. This was indeed a community effort. Even though public health was leading the effort, we were not working alone. And so we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew we appreciated their support that was given. With the ending of the emergency, we want the community to know and remember that it doesn't mean that the virus goes away. What the end of the emergency means is that we are transitioning from managing COVID-19 as an emergency with setting up the extra testing and vaccination sites and also providing additional ways for people to get treatment. And so we're transitioning to managing COVID-19 the way we manage other infectious diseases. So we do ask that individuals continue to use the, sorry. We do ask that individuals continue to use the ways that we know to prevent disease. And so be up to date on COVID-19 vaccinations, testing for COVID-19 if you have symptoms, asking your healthcare provider for treatment if you do test positive for COVID-19. We also ask vulnerable people, including those that are greater risk of severe disease, to consider wearing a mask in indoor public places. Some of the changes that residents may notice with the ending of the emergency, one is that our dashboard that we have been updating on a daily or weekly basis will come down. We will continue to monitor COVID the same way that we do other diseases, but we will not have the public-facing dashboard. Public meetings governed by the Brown Act, such as city council, Board of Supervisors, school board, and the affiliated advisory bodies will need to return to in-person meetings if they have not done so already. We are aware that there is legislation that is being worked on to be able to make changes that will allow additional access for individuals because I think there was a recognition that being able to have Zoom and phone access helped those that had difficulty with transportation. But we don't know when that is going to be worked out yet. As I mentioned, we did have several community testing sites that were being funded by the state. We are told that as long as the funding is available, those testing sites will remain available. But we anticipate that in a few months, that funding will end. And so those test sites will go down. So what it all means is that for individuals that need testing, they can either use the at-home tests or they will have to go to their own healthcare provider. The vaccinations, we still have our vaccination teams out for the next few months, but those will come to an end as well. I think it's important also for people to note that the following are not tied to the emergency declaration and not directly affected by the end of the emergencies. And this includes the health officer orders. Right now, we do not have any local health officer orders, but there's still a state health officer order governing masking in certain settings such as healthcare. So that remains until the state health officer changes it. The Cal OSHA non-emergency regulations are still in place also for workplaces and businesses. The emergency use authorization for vaccination and the investigational new drug applications for treatment are still in place as well. We don't have an end date for any of those. As I mentioned again, Sacramento County will continue to monitor COVID-19 as we do other infectious diseases. And again, I just want to thank all of you for your support during this time. And with that, I think we can take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So you spent a good portion of your testimony, Dr. Casiri thanking others. And I think that was appropriate, certainly, to do that. But I want to start my comments by thanking both you and Mary Jo for your exceptional leadership over the last 36 months. 36 months ago, I sat in that chair to my right. And I would argue that it's always, I think, challenging at times to be Chair of a governing body. But I would posit that being Chair in 2020 was perhaps the most difficult time so far this century. And we all remember the throes of what we were going through in those early days of the pandemic. And unfortunately, the additional stressors that we had here in Sacramento County in terms of our executive leadership. And it was, I think, your resolve, in particular, Dr. Casiri, to maintain a very clear path for us to follow, whether it was in terms of resource allocation or dealing, how best to deal and help educate the public about something that was just completely unfamiliar to all of us. And I just really think it would be a gross omission if, you know, we didn't, again, reflect on your leadership and that of Mary Jo's and certainly our executive team. And of course, the line staff, your line staff, that really did the amazing work that they did so well, working very long hours, being, at times, very, very demoralized for different reasons. And looking back on my chairmanship and that entire first few months of the pandemic, you know, I'm really, I can't stress it enough, we were so fortunate to have you be willing to continue to lead us. And so I'm very, very grateful. You've heard us time and time again, thank you for your efforts. But this is a bit nostalgic because it marks the end of a very, very historic chapter in our county's history, in our nation's history, in our global history. And we couldn't have gone, got through it the way we did, saving the lives the way you did, without your capable and strong leadership. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost.
Dr. Casiri, I first want to thank you and your team. I know during this, I guess, what Supervisor Serna is saying about historic chapter is, yes, it was. And during that time, you all worked so hard. And I know there were, there were different opinions on how that whole episode unfolded. I'm so excited that you brought this forward. I've been waiting for this for three years. I never in a million years thought that in March 2020, shutting it down to flatten the curve would end up being a three-year episode of what I consider to be a catastrophic crime against humanity. And I, I'm very happy to see the state of emergency ending. I don't believe this comes, this isn't directed at you. It's directed at the Department of Defense and the FDA and the CDC, who have promulgated this and put this upon us. I'm a little bit confused about the testing and the shots and the masking that is being recommended by, I'm assuming, CDC, down to CDPH. Those all were on emergency use authorizations. And my understanding is that you cannot promote or require an EUA if there is no state of emergency. And the state of emergency would end the shots and the masks and the testing. And so you, am I understanding that that is not what the CDC is stating to you, or?
That is not correct. I do have some information here that I can show you that shows which authority is used for the emergency as well as the EUA. I'll put it up. So as you can see, the federal public health emergency is under the Section 319 of the Public Health Service Act. And the national emergency declaration is under Section 200 of the National Emergencies Act. And the EUA declaration is under Section 564 of Federal Food, FDA, and Cosmetic Act. So they are governed by different authority and different offices that declare them. As I mentioned, we don't have an end date. And I think I can show this.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. Are you saying there's still a state of emergency under those other acts?
The, I think I mentioned it that the federal COVID, oh, maybe I missed it. The federal COVID-19 emergency will remain in place until May 11. But again, the federal emergency is separate from the EUA. And I can show you some dates here.
How is it separate? I'm not sure I understand.
Again, this is at the federal level. So this shows you changes in pandemic measures. So 228, you can see that the California health emergency ends. And we're here also to request that you also end the county emergency. And then May 11 will be unwinding of the Medicaid. And also at that point, the federal health emergency will end. And also at that point, the federal health emergency will end. We don't know about when the EUA will end. As you can see, there's a question mark there. We would have to wait until we hear from the federal government. And when they talk about commercialization, that basically means that the vaccine and the treatment will be paid for through the regular channels, which is insurance. And for those that have Medicaid, it would be Medicaid.
Okay, well, I won't belabor this. I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward. I support the end of this state of emergency. I want to go on record as saying I think it is time to, as we wind down the emergency, it is not lawful for us to require a shot. It's not lawful anyway. But, and it should, we should not be promoting an emergency use shot, especially given the evidence that we have, not just in the United States, but in the world, that the shot has damaged more people than COVID-19 itself. And I'm really concerned about the shot. And I don't, I don't, I want to, I want to find a way for us to end it and send it home and not be promoting it in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So of course, every member of this board has the opportunity to express their opinion. What we just heard, I wholeheartedly disagree with. And so much so that I just cannot kind of let it stand unchallenged. There is no proof that the inoculation against COVID-19 has caused more damage, taken more lives, caused more illness than the, than COVID itself. And so I just want to make it clear. And I, I think, I'm pretty sure a majority of this board feels the same way, that the vaccine, the precautionary measures, whether it be mask wearing, social distancing, that we've all engaged in over the last 36 months, and as the doctor mentioned, will continue in some instances as it relates to healthcare fields and environments, will continue to save lives. So again, it's a matter of opinion whether you believe in science or not. I believe in science. I believe in medicine. And in my opinion, again, if we were to not have done what we did with the leadership of Dr. Casiri, Mary Jo, and others in this county, we would be marking this day as a very, very dark one in terms of lives lost. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Or Supervisor Frost, does something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I can bring experts, military doctors and experts who do have proof, and there is also proof from the FDA that early on, before they released this shot, as they were working through the meetings and approving this and sending it down to CDC, there was a list, a long list of side effects that they knew this shot had. And they consisted of heart arrhythmias, strokes, myocarditis, loss of fetal pregnancy loss, reproductive problems, and blood clots. And the list goes on, a long list that is documented and can be provided. And so if this board wants, I can arrange this. If this board wants, I can arrange to bring that information so that we can at least look at it. I think there's a lot of censorship. And there's, we're not getting all the information. And I'm concerned that people are taking this shot thinking it's safe and effective. And they're not even receiving, they're saying it's approved and that it can be used in conjunction with the EUA. But the one, the shot that was approved, Comirnaty, was not approved to be distributed in the United States. The emergency use authorization provides a medical description of what's in the shot, and it's a blank page. And so they're saying you can use it in, you know, you can use the EUA in place of the approved application for Comirnaty in the United States. But it's, you, they're not distributing or giving Comirnaty shots in the United States.
So I'm going to, I'm interviewing here.
We're in a position now where no one wants to look at the information. And I don't understand why no one will even look at it.
Because it's bogus, Sue. It's bogus information.
Supervisor Serna, so Supervisor Serna, yeah. A quick response is I'll remind, remind the members that the scope of our agenda item today is to approve action on the resolutions.
I understand. I just want to say, yeah, I rely on the experts too. And like, the most important local expert we have is in front of us today and has been in front of us for the last 36 months, leading us. She happens to have an M.D. after her name. Not, any of us, none of us have that.
I respect that, and I, and I also.
If you did, Sue, you would, you would trust the doctors.
Still, I think it's good. It's good to have more information, not rely on one mind over an issue.
Okay, we're exceeding this, certainly the scope of this agenda item.
I'm sorry, I yield.
Supervisor Hume, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I do. Relative, bringing it back to the actual agenda item and the termination of the declaration of state of emergency. I'd just like to quote Curly Bill Broshus in Tombstone when he said, "Well, bye." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Do. So we have some in-person comments and we have phone comments. Looks like we have one in-person comment at this time. Ms. Woolley?
And how many on the phone?
It looks like we have about two or three. And once we open that, then I'll go ahead and close it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you good, are you ready, Ms. Woolley?
Yes, I'm a little shook up over. I just wanted to celebrate and, you know, bring balloons and flowers and confetti and say thank you, and as Pat Hume said, "Bye." I also wanted to be grateful. I'm thankful that we've all gotten through this. I'm grateful that I did the research on how many deaths we had in the county. I am grateful that I did the research from 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And I'm glad that we didn't have a gigantic emergency. I saw that the emergency was waning long ago. I just wanted to also say that I prayed about this in March of 2020. I believe in God. I believe in a power greater than myself. I believe that there is a Creator. I believe that we are a republic. And when I prayed earnestly, I heard God say, "There's nothing to fear here." And I started going through the county as if I was going about my normal business. I just want to say that it was sad that I got so much ridicule and non-compassion for walking without fear and going where I, I knew that I would be okay. So because we're going to be remaining in an EUA situation, this may happen again. That's probably predictable. I just want to tell you that I know now that my rights come from God. We, the people, carved out our rights in the Constitution. The Constitution was.
You have about five seconds.
Created to protect those rights. I will walk my way with God. That's who I believe in. And thank you for listening, and thank you for ending this emergency in the county.
Thank you for your comments. And now we will close the in-person public comments and move to the phone comments. And I'm going to also shut that queue down. Okay? If you could transfer the first caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Gabrielle. I support ending these resolutions. You guys know that I have been asking you to do that since August 2020, based on the fact that there was no longer an emergency way back then. Even your, you guys had been advised to keep extending it and keep it going to apply for more FEMA funding. So I am thankful to see this. I want to say that I'm disheartened to hear that the bullying is still happening and the discrediting those that are doing the research and paying attention to what doctors internationally are saying. Refusing to look at the information on the damage of the bioweapon is not a lack of facts. Okay? So just because you don't look at the information doesn't mean the information isn't available. Pfizer's own documents that were subpoenaed and pushed out by the court disclose it. 542 neurological events occurred in 501 patients, 95% of which were marked as serious. 16 of the 501 died. 50% of those adverse events occurred within the first 24 hours post-injection. That's just one, one study, one page of a Pfizer report. So I'm very thankful that this is going to end. I'm assuming you guys are all voting on it based on the dialogue that's occurring. I want to say thank you for Sue Frost for constantly sticking her neck out and being slapped on the head for having the audacity to do her research and not just listen to one doctor. No disrespect for Dr. Casiri. There are other doctors that are active in the field, trained in these things that may see something she doesn't. Clearly, that's what's happening around the world. I want to say that we have a lot of cleanup to do. I was turned away two weeks ago from getting lab work. I have some health issues going on. And because I cannot tolerate a mask due to my own personal health, I was turned away and am being denied lab work. So we have a long way to go from this county because there's still discrimination occurring that cannot tolerate a face covering. And COVID is just not at a place where we need that. I disagree with Dr. Casiri based on evidence. So anyway, I want to say thank you. I also want to say shame on you guys for not looking at the research and the data. You're hurting the county, whether you realize it or not. And have a great day.
Thank you. Next caller. Sorry, I'll do a better job at monitoring the time and managing multiple screens. Sorry about that. Hi, caller. Please mute the meeting in the background. And then you can start with your, your comments, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Okay, good morning again, Supervisors and staff. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. Thank you very much, Supervisor Frost, for all of your comments on this. It is way past time for the state of emergency to end now. Supervisor Serna, your, the reason you do not know the information that Supervisor Frost is referring to, that the last caller referred to, is that there is a blackout on this information by the corporate mass media. You will not find it on your favorite sources on the corporate mass media. But you may know, there was recently an undercover video of a high-ranking Pfizer executive, Dr. Jordan Walker, Jordan Tristan Walker, Pfizer director. And in a undercover video, he made several damning statements that Pfizer was intentionally mutating the COVID virus for financial gain, and they are going to continue to do it. He also made several statements that they suspect, or they know, that the COVID vaccine has long-term adverse effects on women's reproductive health. Let me quote some of these. You can find this video on projectveritas.com, P-R-O-J-E-C-T, veritas, V-E-R-I-T-A-S dot com. I will send you a link, Supervisors, please watch it, everybody. Jordan Tristan Walker says, "There is something irregular about the menstrual cycles, so people will have to investigate that down the line." He was the Director of Research and Development, Strategic Operations, mRNA Scientific Planner for Pfizer. Walker says, "The COVID vaccine shouldn't be interfering with that menstrual cycle, so we really don't, we don't really know." He says, "I hope we don't find out that somehow this mRNA lingers in the body and like, because it has to be affecting something hormonal to impact menstrual cycles." Walker said again, "I hope we don't discover something really bad down the line." Finally, he says, "If something were to happen downstream and it was like, really bad, I mean, the scale of that scandal would be enormous."
I'm sorry, Sir, you are at the end of your time. So could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will send you the link. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Everybody else, please take a look at the research that is out there.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, good afternoon already. My name is Sandy. I am a concerned Sacramento area citizen. And first of all, I want to start with, the Bible says, "Pride comes before the fall." So whoever needed to hear that, please hear it. I want to say thank you so much for Sue Frost and the comments that she's made. I really hope that the rest of the board will accept her offer to provide you with the research that she has taken the time to compile. We live in a republic, and we should be able to discuss our differences and be able, to be open-minded and, and see what else is out there. There's a lot of really good, important information. Some of the information has already been mentioned by the previous individuals. And I would hope that you will receive that information, that you will review it, and that you will take it into consideration. There is always more than one view. And if we can reduce the complications and the damages that could be incurred by, or that are being incurred by individuals now that they've taken the shot and all these boosters that they say that you need, we need to look into this for the, for the welfare of the, of the citizens. So please let's remember, we're supposed to be protecting your constituents. And if you can protect them by considering other data and other information, if you can protect them better that way, then please do so. Please do so. Be willing to see the other side. Again, we're in a republic, and we should be able to have these discussions. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you again, Sue Frost. And again, I hope that the board is willing to, to accept the information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rachel, and I just want to say that I support ending the local emergency and voice my support for Sue Frost for bravely speaking up, which would be considered against the narrative. And I want to echo the previous caller's comments. My hope is that the rest of the Board of Supervisors would be open to looking at data that are, come from other sources other than what they've been given at this point, so that we don't run into this problem again where we are masking, people are having to take injections in order to continue their employment, civil liberties are being stripped. I just hope that you follow the money and see for yourselves that the data is there for you to see. This data from Pfizer, from Moderna, they're all documented. They've been looked over in the vaccine meetings. Adverse events have been documented. They're part of the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System. We've had more adverse events reported from the vaccines in more than over the past 30 years. Anyway, my hope is that you'll find it in your hearts to keep an open mind so that you do that research as Sue Frost has offered to bring in other experts in. And thank you so much for navigating through the emergency as this is something that was unprecedented and never done before. And I understand that it's been a challenge for each and every one of you. And I support ending the state of emergency. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, caller. I thought that you were ending. I did not mean to end you. I deeply apologize for that. Thank you for your call. I deeply apologize for that. Thank you for your call. We have one final caller, and then we have, we'll be done. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Mike. I'm Rich Desmond's constituent here in Fair Oaks. My comment is regarding Sue Frost's comments about the vaccine. I'm also concerned. I had two family members who lost their babies after getting the vaccine. I think it's sad that Phil Serna tries to represent himself as a pro-woman rights person, but then someone disagrees with him, he talks over them, and man explains. And also, he tries to say that he cares about climate change, that he drives a massive Ford pickup truck. I think history is going to remember COVID as one of the greatest human rights abuses and government overreach since probably the civil rights period. And to everyone that's listening, that's waiting for the government to tell you COVID is over, they're never going to do it because it was never about keeping you safe. It was about control. Thank you.
Does that conclude your comments?
Sounds like it does.
Okay, thank you for your call.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes your public comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll turn again to my colleagues on the board. Supervisor Serna.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And before that, I'll just say a couple more words to Dr. Kassiri and Mary Jo, mostly Dr. K. You know, just thank you. You know, I think about any large emergency that's ever happened in the history of societies, and you know, you do the best with the information you have available. And I'm very confident that we were in very good hands in Sacramento County. I mean, obviously, there are, there's never 100% certainty with a lot of things in life. And thank you for navigating this process. I'm sure glad I'm chair this year instead of three years ago. I will tell you that. It's better to be here at the end of the emergency than at the beginning. But Dr. K, I really appreciate you calling out all the partners in this effort. That really means a lot because there were so many community partners that came together to help in just so many different capacities, obviously. And I thank staff. And, you know, I think we were so well-served by your unflappable leadership and availability. I really appreciate the availability. When I first started out, you participating in virtual town halls, and then you being at some of the vaccine clinics yourself and the community events yourself. So just, I just, I really appreciate just that level of engagement and accessibility. So, and with that, we have a motion and a second. Oh, yes, Supervisor Hume, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to make very clear that my flippant movie quote was in no way directed at you, Dr. K. It was my feelings about the pandemic and COVID-19 in general, okay?
Thank you for clarifying, Supervisor Hume. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Moving on now with Mary Jo again, item 56.
Yes, this is the renewal of the proclamation of local emergency due to the 2022-23 winter storms and floods.
Hello, Mary Jo, again.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond and members of the board. Mary Jo Flynn Evans, I'm your Chief of Emergency Services, and I was remiss in not introducing myself last time. On December 31st, a strong series of atmospheric rivers impacted Sacramento and the northern San Joaquin Valley. A local proclamation of emergency was issued on December 31st and ratified by this board on January 3rd. These storms caused widespread flooding, extraordinary stress upon levees, persistent levee overtopping, local flooding of communities and infrastructure, and exhaustion of local resources, including budget and other critical conditions. Between December 26th and January 17th, California had a total of nine atmospheric rivers impact the state. On January 4th, the governor issued a proclamation of emergency, and this was followed by a major disaster declaration on January 14th. The declaration named Sacramento County and authorized individual assistance, debris removal, and emergency protective measures. The major disaster declaration has subsequently been amended by the president on January 26th to include all categories of relief for public assistance and individual assistance. Your board must review at least every 60 days the need for continuing the local emergency. County departments continue to remove debris on public rights of way and provide emergency protective measures such as road repairs and facilitate temporary levee repairs. Under the major disaster declaration, emergency protective measures may take, may take place for up to six months. Concerns are focused on temporary emergency repairs to levees in light of the fact that California continues to receive rain and snow. Separately, I wanted to take this opportunity to remind residents that on March 16th, that is the deadline to submit an application to FEMA for assistance, which could include assistance for uninsured costs, housing or rental assistance, replacement of damaged items, and other needs. I also wanted to acknowledge the hard work of so many, including our county teams, in continuing to respond to protect the public. We are recommending the renewal of the proclamation of emergency and to return to the, within 60 days, to recommend another renewal or a termination of the proclamation. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mary Jo. I see Supervisor Hume in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to begin, as I did every time this comes forward, with commending you and your staff on the amazing work you did certainly during the height of the crisis and then also in the months following. And I can assure my colleagues that I've been in contact with Mary Jo regarding some of the interface that she's been doing with a lot of the constituents down in the south part of the county where the levee breaks and some of the heavy flooding occurred. And I don't envy the in-between that you have to play between those things that you can control and the other agencies and sort of the changing landscape of what will or will not be considered a disaster relief. Toward that end, I've had a conversation with Director Verkary and also with our executive team, and I just want to make sure that we are including in this declaration and in our understanding of what constitutes relief efforts and emergency actions, the roads that have been decimated definitely by the intrusion of water during these atmospheric rivers and during the high-water events, and then also by the traffic that has been necessary to perform the repairs. And so I know that down in the South County, there's some, they're taking a beating, and they were in a bad shape to begin with, and they're in terrible shape now, and we're trying to limp them along. And I just hope that that is a consideration that's given, that when it comes time to, certainly for the county to step up, but also then to be able to submit those for reimbursements and understanding that that was necessary expenditures that needed to take place. Because even though the sun may start shining, you know, within the next week or so, the reality is we have record snowpack up in the Sierras, and all it takes is one warm storm, and that water is going to rise again. And so I commend the work of your agency. I commend the work of the folks, both with the reclamation districts and private landowners, that are doing their best to patch things back together before they're needed again. And so I just want to put that on record, that I hope we can do what we can to make sure that DOT is funded in order to do some of these interim improvements, and then also the long-term repairs and fixes at the back end. So, thank you.
You know, I appreciate that, Supervisor Hume. I hadn't, you know, I hadn't thought about that specifically, and I'm looking up at Ron here, and it's a good question. I mean, are roadways in the unincorporated county already degraded, obviously, with our PCI index being so low? But will there be, will there be some eligibility or an avenue to get some reimbursement for just the increased degradation that's occurred because of the storms? Ron or Mary Jo, do you know? I mean, I had, I think about it in terms of transportation infrastructure down in District 5 and some of these areas where the roads have been completely destroyed. But what about kind of that general degradation of the roadway from the storms?
I can address that, Chair. Basically-
And how do you quantify that, right?
That one's the tricky part. But we can, as long as we can make a connection to the road damage that occurred during the storm and specifically the period of time that is under the proclamation and the major disaster declaration, tying that and having the records, we can move forward with that request for public assistance. So the process that we're in right now, the first step is to identify all of those major facilities, all of the damage, and inventory that. And we have some meetings coming up with FEMA and the state. After that inventory is submitted, we go into a permanent category of work. So those categories that I mentioned that were expanded in the president's amendment, those are categories C through G. That includes a category for roadway repairs. And we will look and we will work with Department of Transportation to identify that inventory of roads that are eligible. And then we need to proceed with writing a scope of work, a full-blown scope of work that addresses that repair. I did also want to point out to this board that part of that presents an opportunity for improvements through hazard mitigation funding. So as those scopes and projects are developed, we need to consider opportunities for hazard mitigation funding to make improvements that would continually maintain those or make them more resistant to these types of storms or disasters in the future.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. That's good information. I mean, I just think about, you know, Ron and I have had discussions about how many additional hundreds of 3-1-1 reports about potholes. I mean, there are probably some objective measurements. And Ron, off the follow-up, I may even check in with Deb about this before I call you. I just want you to know that. So, okay. So, okay, thank you, Mary Jo. I appreciate that response. Any other, it looks like no other comments from supervisors. Any public comment on this item?
We do not have any callers or in person.
Okay, so the recommended action is to approve the resolution to renew the proclamation.
I would move the item. Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Okay, moving on, item 57.
Item 57 is the vote on proposed Reclamation District 1000 Stormwater Service Fee.
Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the board, Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources. The item before you is to consider a vote on the RD 1000 proposed Stormwater Service Fee. As you're aware, RD 1000 is a flood-maintaining flood-control agency for the Natomas Basin. And they are in the midst of a, developing a new Stormwater Service Fee. They have a hearing scheduled for March 10th, where their board will consider final approval of the fee. In advance of that, they mailed ballots to all landowners within their service area, the county being landowner of 310 properties, 226 of which are subject to this new fee. The, the total of the new fee, if it's approved ultimately by RD 1000, would be $779,000 to the county for, applied to those 226 parcels. It's important to note, though, that there is a pre-existing fee that's assessed by RD 1000, which provided, the new fee is passed, the intent of RD 1000, they've expressed, is that they will reduce the existing assessment by two-thirds approximately, which would have a net result of reducing sort of the overall increase in cost to the county to about $550,000. The majority of the properties, I think, all but 12 of those 226 are airport-owned properties. And so if you have any questions about the particular parcels, I think Director Nicol is here from Department of Airports, and I do believe we have Kevin King, General Manager with RD 1000, if you have any questions about their proposed fee.
Okay, I appreciate that, Michael. Thank you. Yeah, so this is a situation where we are going, the board's going to be voting whether or not we want to protest the proposed rate increase by RD 1000.
Correct. And let me add, based on how you vote, you know, in support or opposition, the resolution will authorize staff to carry that vote forward on the ballots and submit them to RD 1000's office on your behalf.
Great, thank you. And probably shouldn't go anywhere. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My mic's off there. Do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on this?
We do not at this time.
So I had a chance to hear in detail from Kevin about this a number of months ago. And obviously, this is in the first district. It's in, it's effective in the Natomas area of the county. One thing that wasn't mentioned by Michael was the, kind of what's driving the need for the prospective increase, primarily are antiquated pump station facilities. And I know Kevin's on the phone. He could, he could add more detail if he so wishes, in terms of the various costs that are driving this. But I can tell you, as someone who has now lived in Natomas for over 20 years and has a great deal of respect for the internal drainage system that keeps us from flooding, I am going to be supporting this and moving support, moving the recommendation to, to support this because I feel that this is a public safety issue. And while it does represent a net increased cost to the county, it is, I think, funds that are well-placed to make sure that our internal flood control system, and an important part of Sacramento County, is adequate. And let's not forget, we just don't have the airport as a tremendous asset in the Natomas Basin. We also have a growing metro airpark, you know, business, business park. So we need to keep that in mind as well. So I will be moving the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna. And I'll second the motion. And no public comment. Looks like no other questions or comments from board members. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the morning session. We will recess and then go upstairs, or close session is, second floor. It'll be on second floor. South Conference, okay. Okay, it is 2:05, and I will call this afternoon session to order and ask Clerk to please call roll to establish a quorum.
Okay, good afternoon. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, so let's start with our first afternoon item. That's item 58.
Item 58, approved resolution renaming a portion of the Dry Creek Parkway Trail, the Robert F. Bastian Memorial Trail.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Liz.
Just kidding, probably. I am very grateful to be here today to recommend renaming the Dry Creek Parkway Trail after Robert "Bob" Bastian. He was an amazing human who passed away last year, a very kind soul, and someone I was proud to call a friend. In addition to all of the service that he provided to regional parks, serving as a Recreation and Park Commission member for over 31 years, he did an amazing amount of work in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. And just to list a few of the things off.
Excuse me real quick, Liz. Can you ask, Flo, can you have them take down the PowerPoint? That's going to be the next item.
Oh, yeah.
59. Thank you.
He served as a chairperson for the Rio Linda, Alberta Recreation Park District. He was a founding member, president and vice president of the Rio Linda, Alberta Historical Society. He served as president, vice president, and vision chairperson for the Rio Linda, Alberta Lions Club. He was a shriner, a mason. He served as a member of the Rio Linda Chamber of Commerce, the Grant Alumni Association, Grant High School, the Grange, and the Dry Creek Parkway Advisory Committee. He was a Special Olympics and a Pop Warner football coach, and served as a leader in the 4-H Club. He was elected member of the Rio Linda, Rio Linda Union School District Board of Trustees, as well as the Twin Rivers Unified School District Board. He served the, the members of our community for many, many years, and it is just an honor to be able to present this recommendation to your board. The Dry Creek Parkway Advisory Committee conceptually approved this, and our Recreation and Park Commission also conceptually approved this, and we're bringing it forward to you for your final approval.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Supervisor Frost.
Oh, Liz, I want to thank you for helping us and the community with this. Bob Bastian, it's so nice, the tribute that you have given him here. He, from the moment he landed in Rio Linda, he was looking for what could he do for his community, and he was a leader, he was a consummate leader. And if anyone ever needed help, he was there, and he was always at every event, and he was loved by everyone. And- And it was really sad to say goodbye to him, and his family has been through a lot this year, in the past couple of years. And so I'm, I'm really excited about this, and especially want to thank you, because whenever we need, when we, we have requests, you always try to figure out how you can make it, help us out. So that's appreciated. And if no one else has any other comments, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any, any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Liz, I'll bring it back to you. Anyone else here to speak on this?
I do not see anyone in the audience.
From your staff? Okay.
Yeah, I do not see anyone else in the audience.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Okay, moving on to item 59.
Item 59 is to approve the American River Parkway Natural Resources Management Plan, certify the subsequent environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopt the findings and statement of facts and overriding conditions.
Okay. And I, and we're actually ahead of schedule here, Flo, so should we?
I am just blowing it today.
Oh, that's my, that's, that's, that's my fault. So do we need to take a five-minute recess?
Let's go ahead and take your own ranks and your appointment. You have own ranks and appointments. So hang on one second. I'll get all of my paperwork, please.
So this will take us to item 63.
Yeah, let's go to item 63. If you don't mind, this is your own ranks, appointments to the boards and commissions, and this is in relation to your Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Conservancy. And I believe you, this is the alternate for District 5.
Supervisor?
Yes, and I don't have any word at this point.
Okay. We will bring this back when, when you're ready, so I won't do a continue to a certain date. Okay. And then let's move on to your nominations. That's item 64. You are continuing to March 14th, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Recreation and Park Commission, continuing to March 28th, the Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to April 11th, the Galt Arno Cemetery District and the Sylvan Cemetery District. And we have a few items. Children's Coalition.
Please, Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th.
Thank you. And Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District.
I would like to nominate James Means, and I will say this gentleman said this will be the fulfillment of his life's calling to be appointed to the cemetery district. So could not be more proud to appoint him.
Very nice. Okay, we'll note that on the record. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Rosalind Bryant and Jill Zito, and continue the remainder until March 28th, please.
Okay, got that. Thank you. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. Mr. Desmond?
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 28th.
Okay, that's noted. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Mr. Serna?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Evan Minton.
Okay. And then Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to March 28th.
Thank you. Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Chiefs recommend continuing to April 11th.
Noted. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, nominate Daryl Wu.
Okay. And then we have the Veterans Advisory Commission. And Mr. Serna?
Like to nominate Charles So.
Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to March 28th.
Okay, that concludes your nominations, and it looks like we have about two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
We are too efficient today.
We are, my goodness. Okay, start the muzak. 30 seconds, Liz.
I'll be happy to return after a short commercial break. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna read that back into the record when we come back on record.
Okay, it's 2:15.
Okay, this is to approve the American River Parkway Natural Resources Management Plan, certify the subsequent environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopt the findings and statement of facts and overriding conditions.
So I have before you, some of you have seen this, our Natural Resources Management Plan in all its glory. It's a beautiful, beautiful document, also serves as a good fitness tool.
That's right. Don't hurt yourself lifting that thing up.
Should you choose to carry it around all day. All right, so. So we have a presentation outline today for you. This will go over the Natural Resource Management Plan background, the purpose, overview and feedback, implementation, sequo analysis, and additional feedback from sequo, and any discussion that your board wishes to have. For background, we have been working on this plan for quite some time. Work first started when we were finalizing the last update to the American River Parkway Plan in 2008. Sacramento County Department of Regional Parks began a process to develop a Natural Resource Management Plan for the Parkway, and the original Natural Resource Management Plan Stakeholder Committee worked with regional parks from 20, 2008 until 2010. And I want to bring up that this was really kind of a brainchild of Save the American River Association in partnership with county parks. Some of the things that were accomplished on that first go-around. A baseline ecosystem mapping of the Parkway, the identification of high resource, high-value resources, as well as degraded areas that could be improved, and preliminary recommendations for Parkway management, including identifying opportunities for protecting identified high-value resources and opportunities for creating desired habitat in degraded areas. We had a short break, and then in 2014, we were able to re-initiate the Natural Resource Management Plan effort. This is with the goal of creating a document that would be aligned with the goals and policies of the 2008 American River Parkway Plan. A new stakeholder committee convened in spring and summer of 2015 developed a set of recommended draft plan objectives to provide the guidelines and parameters for a scope of work. Stakeholder participants included delegates from the American River Equestrian Trail Patrol, American River Natural History Association, American River Parkway Advisory Committee, American River Parkway Foundation, California Native Plant Society, Sacramento Running Association, Save the American River Association, and the Sierra Club. In 2018, we released a request for qualifications. With the formation and subsequent funding of the Lower American River Conservancy, which is a program of the Wildlife Conservation Board, regional parks was able to secure grant funding to fully initiate the Natural Resources Management Plan. The Natural Resource Management Plan represents a coordinated and cooperative effort that incorporated feedback from local stakeholders and agencies with jurisdiction within the Parkway. This included multiple meetings with the Technical Advisory Committee, known as the Natural Resources Management Task Force, and multiple public outreach workshops. Members of the task force included Water Forum, Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, Wildlife Conservation Board, Central Valley Flood, Army Corps of Engineers, California Fish and Wildlife, SMUD, Parkway Stakeholder Advocates, and Fish and Wildlife Service. And it's important to note that we were really involving a lot of these regulatory agencies because we knew of the upcoming levy work that was going to be happening on the Parkway, and we wanted to make sure we were incorporating that into our Natural Resources Management The purpose of the Natural Resources Management Plan. As I stated earlier, it was developed to be aligned with the goals and policies of the American River Parkway Plan, including the following very specific goals. 3.4, management of the Parkway shall ensure the protection of the Parkway's resources, its environmental quality, and natural values. A resource impact monitoring plan shall be developed that clearly defines criteria and standards to monitor, evaluate, and protect the Parkway's resources from overuse, provide steps to be taken to restore areas that have been overused. 3.5, agencies managing the Parkway should develop and implement an integrated vegetation and wildlife management plan to accommodate native wildlife species and minimize adverse effects of non-native species. So our Natural Resource Management Plan provides relative, relevant background information of biological, physical, and cultural resources, human use impact reduction, and details existing resources and potential management actions for each of the 19 area plans, consistent with the area plans from the American River Parkway Plan. This is an overview of the goal areas and lists the number of goals and objectives we have for each. Biological resources, physical resources, cultural resources, human use impact reduction, agency and community coordination. And these were designed to be smart, which means they are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. Of our site-specific potential management actions, there are approximately 65 projects, and we're going to try to undertake about 12 within the first 10 years. As a, an attachment to your report, there is a five-year budget plan, which identifies all of the current and ongoing work the regional parks is undertaking, as well as work that needs to be initiated. For fiscal year 2324, we have identified the following new projects to initiate. Wildfire rehabilitation planning, wildlife connectivity planning, development of community science programs, establishment of educational partnerships, development of an agreement for the utility corridors, which would include revegetation with native plantings, restoration and naturalization of grassland riparian and woodland habitat, and naturalization of salmon habitat. Management actions that are in progress include tracking and documenting encampments, tracking and documenting wildfire damages to facilities, tracking wildfires, collegiate partnerships, water quality testing, and interpretive signage, conservation of riparian grassland and woodland and elderberry habitat, wildfire prevention, and mitigation of encampment impacts. The Natural Resource Management Plan also has general management actions. These are common actions that are across the Parkway. Many are identified as goals and objectives, including updating the invasive plant management plan, rehabilitating areas impacted by encampments, remediating social trails, and developing a wildfire prevention, response, and rehabilitation strategy. Within the Natural Resource Management Plan, there are different management categories for each of the land use areas. They are conservation, restoration, naturalization, and rehabilitation. We are striving to convert areas into conservation status. We have a Natural Resource Management Plan Annual Review Monitoring and Reporting Plan that we are developing right now. Oversight of this plan involves a Technical Advisory Committee, which has nine members, including three general Parkway stakeholders. It also includes membership from Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, Wildlife Conservation Board, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, regional park staff, and again, two members from the American River Parkway Advisory Committee. This is attachment six to the board item as the draft monitoring plan. This is our adaptive management tool, which provides us with the framework for monitoring and reporting on the progress of our general and specific management actions. This will include ongoing coordination with stakeholders and project proponents. It will be brought to the American River Parkway Advisory Committee for endorsement and to the Recreation and Park Commission for final approval. It will be reviewed annually in conjunction with our Technical Advisory Committee. And on to the feedback we've received so far on our Natural Resource Management Plan. Prior to the release of the March 2021 draft plan, we had one web survey and seven workshops, including workshops at the Recreation and Park Commission and the American River Parkway Advisory Committee. Some of the key takeaways from this feedback included, and highlighted concerns of the, our stakeholders, included encampments, invasive plants, education to reduce user impacts, wildfire, monitoring and community science, and of course, the utility corridors. After the draft NRMP, we had 13 commenters and over 330 comments. About half of those comments were corrections or clarifications. 18% of those comments were feedback from this is great, or good, to not enough, and 35% was clarification that needed to be provided back to the commenter. All of these responses were shared and posted on the park's website, and a main key concern was funding for implementation. Our five-year work plan has an estimated $18 million price tag associated with it. We have identified about $16 million in grant funds that we would like to pursue, leaving a $2 million funding gap over the five years. In addition, once we start making some strides with the implementation, our ongoing future O&amp;M costs will likely increase. We will be pursuing with the Office of the County Exec a growth request forthcoming for staff augmentation for the implementation of the plan, which would include an associate planner and a natural resource specialist position. For the environmental analysis, there was a Natural Resource Management Plan draft subsequent EIR, which had a public review period of September 9th through November 3rd of 2022. We received four comment letters, and we had some minor changes to the mitigation measures. The first being, the server, the survey period for nesting raptors should be February 1st to September 15th. There should be surveys associated with bank swallows to occur within 200 feet of And also clarification that lands that fall under the state lands commission jurisdiction, we should consult with them. The final subsequent EIR was published on February 16th, 2023. It is our recommendation that you certify the Natural Resource Management Plan subsequent final EIR, adopt the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve our final Natural Resource Management Plan. With that, I will open for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. So first note of thanks to you, Liz, and to your staff, and especially to our Parkway advocacy community, who has been an integral part of getting us to this point where we can finally, finally consider the Natural Resource Management Plan in its entirety. And I know it's been a long time coming, and there's been fits and starts here and there, but I think this is an additional resource from a planning perspective that will certainly bode well for the health of the Parkway. I mean, I think that's generally what everyone's hoping. But I do want to touch on the growth request that you gave us a heads-up about as it relates to some additional staff. You mentioned you're looking at a growth request, Liz, for an associate planner and a natural resource specialist. Maybe you can shed a little light on what the intent would be to ensure that the management plan implementation proceeds as we all want to see happen with these two additional staff, staff members to your department. Will they be working with, will they be deployed with other existing staff, whether it be like maintenance or others? So maybe you can explain a little bit how So maybe you can explain a little bit how with these two additional positions, you think for the time being you have what you need to make sure that the plan doesn't just gather dust?
Correct. So currently on my staff, I have a senior planner, Casey. She's actually here in the audience, and she is a conservation biologist. So she would be our management staff that would be overseeing the implementation of this program. In addition, of course, we have our maintenance staff and our rangers that provide a lot of the M&amp;O support for some of the things like the encampment mitigation, wildfire prevention. So these two additional positions would be working to help us, A, find and secure grants, make sure that we're actually implementing all of the resource improvement that we want to with several different partners. And I would be remiss not to recognize the fact that we have, again, some very productive parkway volunteer groups that are helping us meet our goals of getting the trash and debris off of the parkway and addressing the encampment impacts.
Right. That's, you just teed it up perfectly for my next series of suggestions and comments. And I know I'm going to beat them to the punch a little bit here, and I'm sure our chair was getting ready to recite a laundry list of things that we both have concerns about. But in terms of the impacts that we are just all too familiar with from the encampments on the parkway, what will the adoption of this plan do to enhance our legal ability to more immediately address, you know, the impacts that we're seeing, whether it be the refuse and the needles, but also the combustibles during the summer and, you know, the fact that we have a number of ordinances that are now in place, some have been in place for years, most recently, of course, the critical infrastructure and the parkway specific ordinance. But what, how does this, how does this plan fit into the kind of the arsenal of tools that we have to compassionately take care of the parkway? Of course, you know, simultaneously looking after folks that deserve something other than a tent space on the, on the parkway to shelter in, because I think that's what's on everyone's mind, is how will this help? And can we, you know, expect to look back a year, two, three from now, saying it was the adoption of the management plan in combination with the other tools that I've mentioned that really give us what we need to do a much better job? When I say "we," it's the county, it's, you know, those that have been caring for the parkway in addition to the county, the advocacy community, and others, because I think that's really, for me, where the rubber meets the road here.
Certainly, and I would agree with you that it's a combination of this plan and some of the other tools that we have at our disposal that is really going to help us start to make a difference. As we prioritize the areas that we're cleaning and looking at encampment mitigation, this provides us with that additional, basically, background information that supports our actions. So this document, plus our environmental review document, has stated, this is something that needs to happen. We need to take care of our natural resources. We need to make sure that we are addressing the impacts of our encampments on the parkway. And I think it will be, it could be used to help us defend any questions that might come up on why we're doing what we're doing.
So let me give you a, for instance, here. So for instance, if we have a segment of the parkway that we know has substantially greater habitat value, or, you know, in terms of its flora and fauna, and there are encampments that are encroaching that are, have demonstrated that they're a threat to this part of the parkway, would we be able to at least perhaps assist in moving folks away from that very highly sensitive part of the parkway first, if we had to work in steps, while we're looking for off-site shelter opportunities for those folks? And that would be, at least in my, you know, in my mind, back in my mind, that would be the second step, is to completely move people off the parkway into, you know, much more humane, much more humane shelter situation. Is that something that you would agree this could help us do? Because now we're, now we've mapped it, now we have a better understanding of that value?
Absolutely. We will be relying on the information in this plan, as well as, one of the implementation measures is to do further mapping on the parkway, and we would be relying on that information to inform our prioritization of areas where we are doing mitigation projects, including encampment mitigation.
Okay. And then finally, is this, how will this be used as a tool for, for our, you know, our friends that, you know, some of whom we heard from this morning that are doing the great work that they're doing, volunteering their time and an effort to clean the parkway? How can this be of use to them to maximize the value of what they're doing?
I would say that this, again, it goes back to, this provides them support and validation of what we're doing as far as mitigation of encampment impacts on the parkway. It gives us the tool to work with them to help prioritize the areas. Obviously, we are working very much closely with a lot of these organizations in providing staff support, heavy equipment support, to remove a lot of this trash and debris out of the parkway. And it's, it's a, another way of saying, yes, you're doing what we need to have done.
And then are we going to get any kind of report backs on a regular basis in terms of the quality of implementation?
Yes. So on an annual basis, we'll be reviewing our natural resources management plan with the monitoring plan. It's going to go through and say, we succeeded in completing XYZ, or we've looked at this from an adaptive management standpoint, and we feel we need to make this change to include, let's say, go from 20 acres of grassland to a mixture of 20 acres of grassland and riparian, based on adaptive management from what we're seeing on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I might have questions and comments later. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Serna, and obviously a lot of the same themes that I'm interested in, and absolutely agree with Supervisor Serna in terms of the approach and in terms of what we're hoping for out of this plan. And that monitoring plan, so that would be something that would be updated regularly. The plan itself wouldn't be, but the monitoring plan provision-
Correct. The monitoring plan will be updated annually, and we're, we're not asking the board to approve the monitoring plan so that we have the ability to be more flexible in updating that, again, adaptive management style.
And in terms of the prioritization, I think that's a very great point that Supervisor Serna brings up, is that, you know, and it kind of dovetails with the discussion we had earlier today with the organizations and advocates doing a lot of the, the good work, you know, helping clean up the parkway, is, you know, we have to prioritize our resources we have in the county, and my hope is that this is really going to help us focus those efforts on the areas that Supervisor Serna described, and specifically in the context of our new parkway ordinance that we passed.
Correct.
And I know, I'll look at our county exec, when do we, you and I talked about this, when do you expect that we might get a report back on both the infrastructure ordinance and the parkway ordinance?
Probably April.
Okay, in April, we'll hear a report back from that. Okay. And Liz, a couple of questions. So I, just in terms of the plan itself, I know one of the issues that it highlights obviously is wildland fire, which is a huge threat to the parkway. And I know it's listed as one of the issues, but is it, is it treated in a little more detail in any of the chapters here? I couldn't, wildland fire, I mean, it's, I'm not going to ask you to-
Oh, my gosh.
Look through the, okay. I just was looking to see if it goes into a little more detail about wildland fires, or if-
So it recognizes the fact that, you know, obviously, that is one of our biggest threats to the American River Parkway. It recognizes the fact that we need to put together a plan to help us strategize to address wildfire reduction, which we've been doing ongoing for several years now, but kind of to beef up that plan. One of the things that we are doing that we've already, I've already kind of started implementing some stuff, is we've entered into some contracts with folks to, one, to start mapping some of our critical resources already. Also, we've entered into some contracts with, we received a grant for, a CAL FIRE grant for the Rancho Marietta area. And what we did as an add alt to that contract was to get some forester recommendations specific to the American River Parkway and the Dry Creek Parkway, which would help inform such planning efforts. So the first couple of years are going to be really focused on getting all of our plans together and updating those. We did a wildfire reduction plan for the parkway back in 2015 with a consultant, and it's time to update that. And I know our partners, the American River Parkway Foundation, are also working on a community wildfire prevention plan. And so we're a part of their Fire Safe Council to work in partnership with them and providing some of that same data, so we come up with a good plan that we could bring forward to the board for adoption.
Okay. Because I think, you know, just as Supervisor Serna mentioned, in terms of identifying the sensitive habitat, flora and fauna, but I also, you know, identifying the most, the areas most at risk of wildfire, areas most at risk, and I'm talking about, you know, a lot of encampments, most at risk of falling into the watershed either during a weather event or other event. I mean, those are all important in determining how we're going to approach really our homeless encampment response. And I'm glad you touched on the partnership, and you mentioned it, you go into great detail in here with a lot of the partners, and a whole section on agency and community coordination and collaboration. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that, a little more specifically? I know you touched on it in response to Supervisor Serna's comments a few moments ago. Can you, can you specifically talk a little bit about how we could do a better job partnering with some of the advocacy organizations, specifically, you know, the organizations, I know some representatives are still here who are doing some of the trash pickup, as well as other users, user groups along the parkway, to carry out the vision in this plan?
Absolutely. So we have several different encroachment permits that we have granted to different nonprofit or other stakeholder organizations for specific cleanup on the American River Parkway. We ask that they contact our staff and work with us. As we have the resources, as we have the staffing and our heavy equipment, we're out there with them, bringing up the equipment, taking it to our dumpsters, and getting it off of the parkway. I'm not going to lie, we couldn't do it without all of their help. If, for some reason, someone is cleaning something up and we don't have the resources to be out there right away, if people report these trash piles to 311, that enables our staff to have the data to go out and pick it up and follow up later. I feel that we've had a pretty good working relationship with a lot of these groups, and hopefully, some of them will want to speak to that later, but I feel like we do have a great partnership with a lot of these groups.
Okay. So, and just, so I'm, you know, just assure me that you and your staff are communicating with these groups regularly, because obviously, helping you prioritize where the worst areas are in terms of some of the debris left over from encampments. And also, if they just identify to you, I think you just mentioned, if they say where they're going to clean something up, that the Parks Department is going to be there to provide those kinds of supports to haul away the debris. I just want to make sure that communication is happening on an ongoing basis with the groups. I think that's, that's really, really important. And, and I think a lot of the supports that these groups ask for are very minor, not super expensive. I mean, they're, they're providing the labor by and large, and I assume things like bags or getting a bobcat out there to haul the things away, or a truck to haul the things away, that's not what's expensive. What's expensive is what they're providing is the labor, so hopefully, we can, you know, really do everything we can to provide supports for their efforts, so.
Absolutely. And I did want to mention that my staff have been working overtime since the storms to try and get to as much of the trash and debris that we have experienced from the, the trash and debris that got into the river and has since receded. But one of the things that the volunteer organizations do that is phenomenal is they're able to get that fine tuning pickup of the litter and trash, whereas we can go in with our heavy equipment and pick up big piles and get that pulled away. But then they follow up with a lot of that just really finite work that needs to happen to really get the area pristine, and we couldn't do it without them.
Yeah, I agree. It's just, it's heartbreaking from so many angles to see what's going on in the parkway. And you take, you know, young, young people out there, maybe who were experiencing the parkway for the first time, and they see this, it's just, it's just a depressing, you know, environment, so. Okay, thank you, Liz. That's all I have. I don't see anything else from the dais up here. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have in-person comments, and we have phone comments. So if we could have Ms. Betsy Wieland.
There's already a copy up here, Betsy.
I have a yard.
So you have no, no problem.
So I like to tote this around. Impresses everybody. Look at all the work I've done. No, thank you. Okay. So, well, I have to say, all my thunder has been stolen thanks to Liz's presentation and your discussion. I think you've about covered everything, and so anything, anything I would have added, you know, would be redundant, but I am going to be redundant in a couple of areas. Okay. First of all, thank you for your time today and your interest in this and support, lots of support, and welcome Supervisor Hume to the Board of Supervisors. We, I would be remiss in not saying that and acknowledging our public member on the task force for developing this plan, Leah Winternitz, who did a superb job keeping the public always updated, informed, bringing information back to us. Tremendous. As well as Liz said, County Parks was fantastic to work with, always, always available to answer questions, to engage us at every level. So thank you so much for that, Liz. The, the thing that I want to say that you guys actually keyed in on, Supervisor Serna started the discussion, but I brought this up here because this thing weighs about 10 pounds. But the most important part of this document, as far as we're concerned, the public, is Appendix D, and I want to show you. I want to show the public-
I'm going to pause the-
No, thank you.
Here's my document that you're approving, and here is Appendix D, okay? This to us is the monitoring plan is the most important part of this plan, okay? This will be where the rubber hits the road, whether we decide we've wasted, you know, the Wildlife Conservation Board threw a couple of grants, over $600,000 was invested in this. So I am so grateful that you're having this discussion, asking Parks, I'm on the American River Parkway Advisory Committee.
Ms. Swine, you have about five more seconds.
Okay, I'm over with. Okay. In any case, thank you very much, and we'll be keeping in touch with you regarding the monitoring plan and how, how all of that's shaking out, hopefully more than just annually. So, thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Mr. Mark Baker.
Hello again. I want to thank you for considering this. I definitely, River City Waterway Alliance has definitely been a great partner with County Parks. They support us all the way. We support this plan, and we hope you adopt it and pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move on to the telephone comments. So that concludes our in-person comments, so we'll close that, and we'll move on to our phone comments. It looks like we may have one or two callers. Okay, and then we'll close that queue. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You have two minutes to make your comments, so go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll start the timer.
Hello, my name's Garrett McDermott. I'm the president of Family Free Ride. We're a small nonprofit out of Fair Oaks to help get kids on bikes. I've met with Supervisor Desmond before to talk about recreation in the Park District, and also with Director Bellis. And one thing I wanted to point out in the environmental impact plan that you guys are reviewing, it doesn't- reviewing, it doesn't really seem to focus much on improving recreational resources for people in the Parkway, which I'd like to hope we can start addressing, because I think that will bring in more people to the Parkway that will help protect the environment, as opposed to the people that are currently in there destroying it. So, if we can develop fun recreational opportunities for, similarly, our program is getting kids on bikes and developing off-paved trails for them to ride on, really think it would help preserve the environment in the Parkway, so maybe something we can look forward to in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if we could get the next caller, please. This is our last caller, so Mr. Desmond, I'm going to close the queue. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, members of supervisors. Corey Brown, resident of Sacramento. Very proud to serve with many of you on the Lower American River Conservancy Advisory Committee that approves grants for the American River Parkway. And my comments today are not as a member of the LA RC Advisory Committee, but are personal as a Parkway user. The American River Parkway Natural Resources Management Plan, I think, is a really big turning point to move us past the type of degradation we've seen in the Parkway over the last several years that several of you have mentioned during the hearing, to a brighter future, a brighter legacy, so that our kids and future generations will have a wonderful Parkway to enjoy for many years to occur. But this is an essential step, not everything needs to happen, but an essential step, strongly support adoption of it. And I wanted to compliment Director Bellis and the folks that worked on this, all the folks that made public comments, and to thank you for your dedication and your hard work to make sure that we have a safe, clean Parkway. I wanted to just conclude by, again, thanking you and urging you to vote to approve the Natural Resources Management Plan.
Thank you. I think that was well under two minutes, even though I didn't have that running. Okay, and that concludes your public comments.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I am enthusiastically going to move the item for approval. I do want to make a few comments, though, beforehand. First, I want to acknowledge that one organization that we don't have with us in person, represented by its executive director, Diana Pajeto, today, and she unfortunately is dealing with a death in the family. I know she's listening, but I just want to say on record, offer my thanks, and express how grateful we all are to the American River Parkway Foundation, in addition to the other organizations that have been so thoughtful and engaged on the process of developing the plan. And then I also wanted to respond to the gentleman that called in with a very salient point about recreation enhancement, and I couldn't agree more. You know, that's, I think we're all very interested in completing the mission of making sure that the Parkway is not just a beautiful natural space, but a beautiful natural space that people can responsibly recreate in and enjoy. I think the first step in doing that, to be clear, though, is making sure it is safe and clean. And if it's not safe and clean to begin with, no amount of new amenities, no amount of new trail systems, no amount of, you know, fill in the blank, is going to do much to get people back on the Parkway to enjoy it as it's intended. So, that's why I think, Liz, you heard the line of questioning the way you did from Supervisor Desmond and myself about that particular challenge in front of us as it relates to implementation of the plan. So with that, Mr. Chair, again, I'm enthusiastically moving recommendation of the plan, and again, want to do that with a great deal of thanks to everyone that has been involved.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Well, I, excuse me, I will enthusiastically second the motion, and also want to thank you, Liz, and your staff for all the work. If we're judging the amount of work by the weight and size of a document, then you win. So, I don't see any other comments from my colleagues up here. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 60 is the 2024 One Year Action Plan Federal Programs Allocation Process Workshop Number One.
SHRA. Christina, I have you on the list, but apparently that's not the case, so, good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the federal programs manager at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency.
Could you pull the microphones a little down, a little bit? There you go.
Yes.
Towards your mouth a little more.
Hopefully that's better. So today I'll be presenting to you the first workshop on the 2024 Annual Action Plan for three federal entitlement grant programs for the county, which are the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOME, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, or ESG, and finally the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, which is the primary focus of today's workshop. The purpose of the workshop today will be to provide a high-level overview of the annual allocation process and the funding requirements, as well as to provide an opportunity for you, the elected officials, and the public to ask questions and provide input about what projects to be considered for funds. So to get us started, as a little bit of background, the objectives for CDBG funding are developed through our analysis of impediments to fair housing and our consolidated planning processes. Every five years, we prepare an analysis of impediments to fair housing, which identifies barriers to fair housing in the county, and then that analysis helps us to prepare goals and objectives for overcoming those challenges. And those goals are included in our consolidated plan, which covers a five-year period. Then every year, you, as the board, approve an action plan, which identifies the projects and programs that align with those goals in the consolidated plan, to utilize the home ESG and CDBG funds. Overall, the primary objective is to help create ladders of opportunity for low and moderate income residents in the county through three different avenues. The first being affordable housing, which, for example, could be used for home repair or multifamily rehabilitation programs. Second is public facilities and infrastructure, and this could, for example, be used for community centers, parks, libraries, pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And third is public services. In this category, we frequently fund senior services, like Meals on Wheels and homeless When deciding how to spend the CDBG funds, we also need to make sure that it is meeting a national objective. The vast majority of CDBG expenditures must meet the national objective of being an activity that benefits low and moderate income persons. So this can be an activity that benefits an area of lower moderate, I'm sorry, low or moderate income, and this means that the project needs to be in a location that's primarily residential, and at least 51% of those residents need to be at lower moderate income. We can also provide funding directly to low and moderate income clientele, and this is for activities for individuals or households at or below 80% of the area median income. And as an example, this can apply to homeless shelters and Meals on Wheels. Lastly, we also fund low and moderate income housing, and this category helps to provide housing to individuals or households at or below 80% of the area median income, and this is usually provided in the form of gap financing for affordable housing rehab projects. In addition to meeting a national objective, it also must be a CDBG eligible activity. The broad categories of eligible activities include public facilities and infrastructure, which is community centers, parks, playgrounds, et cetera. Public services, and this, again, for example, is Meals on Wheels or homeless shelter operations. Acquisition, and this could be acquisition of a property for an affordable housing project or a public facility. Clearance and remediation activities, and this could be to clean up a site that's contaminated so that it could be developed as a public facility, or a park, or housing. And then homeownership assistance, planning and admin, which is staff costs and environmental studies. I also wanted to point out that in addition to meeting a national objective and being an eligible activity, when selecting a project, we also look at things such as project impact, need, and timeliness. And timeliness is how quickly a project can expend funds, which is important because we have expenditure requirements from HUD. And so in order to meet those requirements, we like to see a project expend funds within 12 to 18 months. So there are also ineligible activities, and I've identified a few here that were important to highlight, the first being general government buildings and expenses, so we can't pay to renovate a government building. Operate and maintenance expenses, so this is like custodial staff, cleaning. Purchasing construction equipment or furnishings, new housing construction, political and religious activities, and regional parks and facilities. And the key word there is regional. If we're submitting or providing funds to parks or facilities, they need to have more of a community or a neighborhood benefit, as opposed to a regional benefit. So this slide identifies the estimated 2024 funding entitlements in the county for each of those three sources. All of the federal programs listed here are formula grant allocations, which means that HUD uses a formula by which they derive the figures, and each year they tell us how much we're going to get, and then we decide how to spend that money. We typically receive the final approved amount by HUD in April of each year. So for planning purposes, we base this year's estimated entitlement on what was previously approved in the previous year, anticipating no change in entitlement. So for 2024, we're estimating we'll get about 5.8 million of CDBG, and for the home program, about 3.7 million. These home funds usually go to acquisition and construction of multifamily affordable housing projects. For the ESG program, we're estimating about $500,000, and this goes to help people who are unhoused, for example, through rapid rehousing, rental assistance, or operations for emergency shelters. And overall, we estimate we'll get about 10 million total for these programs in the The primary focus of the workshop is how to allocate the CDBG funds. So as an example of how these funds are typically divided up among the programs, this table shows how CDBG was divided up in last year's action plan. So about 2.6 million went to infrastructure and public facility improvements, a little over a million to affordable housing. These funds are usually allocated to multifamily rehab and home repairs for low and moderate income homeowners. A little under 800 to public services, and this can be a maximum of 15% of entitlement, and these funds are usually allocated to both homeless activities and Meals on Wheels. 800,000, or about 800,000, to grant planning and admin. This can be a max of 20% of entitlement and is used for staffing and admin fees. 314,000 to the agreement cities, and these agreement cities are local jurisdictions within the urban county that are considered non-entitlement and enter into agreements with, on behalf of the county, which then allows those jurisdictions to receive entitlement funds. And the last category is capital reserve, which is essentially a contingency bucket, and for that we reserved about 400,000. So the next few slides show what public facility and infrastructure improvements we funded in each district for the current consolidated plan period from 2020 through 2023 last year. And the columns identify the project, the years they were funded, as well as the amounts. And you'll see this represents the breadth of investments in infrastructure projects and the types of projects we typically fund. So I'll just briefly go through that. In District One, we funded park and ADA improvements. In District Two, we've funded pedestrian improvements, streetlights, and ADA curb ramps. District Four has ADA, park ADA improvements and streetlights. And I'm sorry, I missed District Three.
Skip District Three.
Yeah, I did. You're right, sorry. In District Three, we have ADA curb ramps, improvements to an ADA fishing pier, two complete streets, and park improvements. And here we are at District Four, who had park ADA improvements and streetlights. District Five has ADA restrooms, two roof projects, and a streetlight project. So the next few slides outline the process moving forward to identify the projects in the action plan. And this process aligns with the county's capital improvement programs, so this allows SHRA and the county to work together, at the same time the county's preparing their capital improvement projects. So I'll just give you the highlights. In December, SHRA initiates the process with the county. In January or February, we meet internally with the county to start discussing potential projects with county staff. In January and February, we also hold our first public action plan workshop in front of the board, which is this workshop today. In February and March, we continue to meet with county staff to narrow down our project list and to confirm project eligibility. Then in March and April, we do a community workshop with a draft list of projects at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Then in April and May, we head back to the board with our draft list of projects. We then hold additional meetings with staff in May and June to fine-tune those projects. Then everything wraps up around August, when we finalize our projects and budgets. And then it takes us about three months to get through the public review process required by HUD, as well as our staff report process, and then we come back to the commission in September, before it goes to the board for final approval in October. Then we submit the action plan to HUD by November 15th. So once again, this is that first public workshop in the process, and we welcome any ideas or input on projects, either from you now or in the future as this process moves forward. And the next workshop will be scheduled for May 23rd. So thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna has a question or comment, but before you leave this, I'm curious, only one community workshop, I think in March was on your list here, is that the only extent of the community outreach you do for the process?
Well, also, the action plan workshops here, also the community workshops as well.
Okay. I'm wondering if it's possible to do more of those, because, gosh, I just think about this, and I, these are projects that really affect people in their, in the micro level in their communities, and I don't know if there's a way to maybe increase the level of community input, LaShelle?
Yes, we definitely can look at additional workshops also, you know, the commission is another opportunity for the community to outreach. And in addition to that, we also have a small area, small NOFA that we do, and that we do a lot of outreach into the community to apply for grants that are $100,000 and below? I think it's about $100,000. So that, we do extensive outreach, trying to encourage those small nonprofits to apply through that process, but we can add some more.
Okay, thank you.
Can I also add, Supervisor Desmond, that LaShelle and I and her team and our teams have been talking, and she works very closely with county staff, and one of the things where we hope to do in the process is really leverage some of the other plans and planning processes and priorities that the board's already identified, so it's not a process independent, but it really is leveraging all of the work that's being done to identify these priorities going in. So I just wanted to add that.
You're stealing my thunder, because I was going to actually, I was thinking about that, I'm looking at Dave. What do we, you know, the board, we approved, what, $3 million in last year's budget for the neighborhood, what are we calling it? Neighborhood revitalization?
Not sure.
Community investment plan?
Yeah.
You came up with some name.
Yeah.
But I was thinking, it really, you know, it's very complimentary of the CDBG efforts. And so thank you, Siobhan, for saying that, because I want to make sure we're not doing these in a vacuum, and really, we can leverage, you know, a combination of some of these dollars and these board priorities to do more, so, thanks for that.
Both I and my departments have been involved in all those conversations as well, so we're all talking quite a bit about this.
Okay. And those were, I think we specifically, not exclusively, but definitely a priority in the environmental justice communities in the unincorporated counties, so, okay. Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So just to maybe add on to that, it would be helpful, especially for District One, if in additional looking at other intentions that the county has, either through its capital budget, or other initiatives that are capital intensive. For District One, because of the political geography involved, it would be a bit of a game changer, quite frankly, if every year, when we go through this, and I have a conversation, and my staff has a conversation with LaShelle and her staff about what's important to District One, it would be refreshing if perhaps we could have maybe an earlier confab with the city council people that overlay with the first district, their districts overlay with the first supervisory district, to understand what's of priority to them, because of course they have discretion over their own allocation of community development block funds, and it would probably, I'm guessing, foster better coordination in terms of how to best leverage and maximize the effect of both city and county CDBG allocations. So that's one idea. The other is, because of the qualifications that are involved in where and how, for what purpose, these funds can be spent. that are involved in where and how, for what purpose, these funds can be spent, has, has SHRA or any other county department ever attempted to make use of someone's GIS platform? I don't know if SHRA even has their own GIS capability. I'm seeing that they do. To, it'd be interesting to map for the county where, and I, I guess you do it by track, census track, but to know where those residential neighborhoods are that have over 50% low income qualification. Because if we, if we even just saw a heat map of that, and maybe you already have that.
Yeah. We do have them, and I have them with me if you want to see one.
I, I don't know that I've ever seen one. That's why I'm asking the question. But it would be good to, to understand that because that, that helps us hone in on the geography of, you know, what we can and cannot do. Because part of this exercise, as you're painfully aware, is we have to look through several layers of qualifications, city, county, income qualifications. And then probably in the back of our own heads, where we just anecdotally know, well, the roadways are bad there, but we don't necessarily know it's an income-qualified neighborhood. So, you know, just in an effort to maybe help distill or synthesize our thought processes each year when we're trying to think about where and how to spend the, the funds, that might prove helpful for all five of us. So those are my, those are my thoughts now. And then I guess lastly, you know, if anyone's wondering, like, they look at the matrix here and they see that District One has relatively few dollars going for improvements. Again, it's the uniqueness of the first district being mostly incorporated. So it's not that we're not making use of CDBG funds. It's that most of the funds available are being deployed and used by the city of Sacramento, not the county.
Good point. Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. So you put up on the slide, and this kind of dovetails on the comments that were just made, relative to the projects, the types of projects that have been funded in the districts in the past. And I looked in the staff report and I didn't find, I found a very high level sort of targets for what projects can be funded. Is there a list that could be sent over to me that would say the types of projects or the qualifications of projects and the organizations that are eligible to receive funding? So that as these requests start pouring in, that I'm able to sift the wheat from the chaff of what is even a feasibility?
So yes, we can absolutely do that. But just to clarify, in terms of the use of the funds, the county directs the funding for CDBG. We set aside a dollar amount for those small nonprofits. It's only $100,000.
Total?
So, total.
Oh, I, I thought it was 100,000 per request.
No.
Darn it.
No, it's total.
Darn it.
It's total. And so what you're seeing basically is what you direct in consultation or working very closely with the staff when we bring these projects back.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Okay. No more comments at this point from the board members? Any public comment on this?
I'm double checking. And we do not have anyone in-house.
Okay. And so the next step is when will we, when will we hear from you again here at the board?
So we'll come back on May 23rd for our second action plan workshop.
Right. And so if I could just-
Yes, LaShelle.
-cheer add. In addition to that, you know, we will continue to have the discussions with the county staff because these things do all come together. This money is really leveraged for other much larger projects. I will also continue to have discussions with you in my monthly briefings. We'll provide you with the map. We do have the map. And it's a GIS map that drills down to exactly what Supervisor Serna is saying. In fact, what we'll do is send a copy to each of you after, after this meeting so that you have that and we'll have those conversations.
Okay, great. Thank you, LaShelle. And I don't think we have any action to take on this item. This is essentially just informational at this point. So.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we will move on to item 61.
Item 61 is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Amendment, a major amendment to update the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Transportation Mitigation Strategy in the Vineyard community. The environmental document is an addendum.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the board. I am Cameron Chu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. I'm going to be giving the first half of this presentation. And afterwards, I'll be turning it over to your Planning Director, Todd Smith, who'll be talking more about the public outreach efforts and the specific plan update. So just as some context, a lot of development going on in the Vineyard area, but this mitigation strategy specifically for the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan, which is highlighted in red. Here's some figures for development in the various plan areas. North Vineyard Station so far has seen about 1,800 units of development with another 1,500 or so in the pipeline. So the, the main crisis mitigation strategy is related to the transportation triggers. And we had a board workshop last year where we kind of went through some of the issues we've been having. But just to recap, the, the triggers are timing-based transportation improvements where we say at a certain unit count, a certain roadway or intersection improvement is required. And we've done this a lot in the past due to public concern about development getting ahead of infrastructure and trying to rein that in. But some of the issues that we're having with that now are the triggers are so restrictive that we're in a situation where in order to build the next one unit, there may be $10 million worth of improvements that need to happen. So we're trying to really right-size how those triggers work with the different phases of development. So as I mentioned, we had a pre-dees board workshop, and we went through four different potential strategies that can be used to solve these trigger timing issues. The first one is adjusting the timing. So if we can defer a trigger to a later time, if a traffic analysis shows that roadway or intersection improvement is not needed right away from a level of service standpoint. A second strategy we can use is to partner with development to deliver improvements. So example, this would be like on South Watt Avenue, where we have other funding sources we can leverage and do a big capital project that has regional benefit. Or alternatively, we can partner with development. And in many cases, they're willing to fund the improvements if DOT is willing to take on the design and delivery of them. Strategy three that we looked at was adjusting the timing and allowing level of service F potentially, which would basically mean in the short term, there'd be some traffic congestion until those improvements are put in the long term. And the fourth strategy we looked at was the dynamic implementation tool, which is a strategy we've been using the Jackson Corridor in new plan areas, where instead of having a fixed trigger number, like 1,000 units to build this intersection, we have a traffic model and we can look at development as it comes in to see when it's truly needed. So the feedback we got from that workshop was an endorsement of the first two strategies, although there were some concerns that were expressed about the traffic congestion as well as the potential for a dynamic tool to reopen environmental documents. So the direction we got was to look at the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan and see if we could solve some of these issues using the first two strategies. And if not, then to come back to the board before looking at the second two. So I'm happy to say we were able to put together a strategy just using those first two. Using the trigger timing deferments, we're able to look at some improvements that aren't needed right away by moving them to a later time. It frees up cash to be able to deliver the more high-priority improvements now. Similarly, with the County Assistance for Delivery of Projects Strategy Two, we are looking at ways that we can partner with development to build some traffic signals, as well as recognize that the county is already taking on certain projects like South Watt. And therefore, we don't need to hold development to those same triggers. So a list of the priority improvements. South Watt Avenue, Waterman Road. We were just there a couple of weeks ago with the board, giving an update on that project. So that's obviously a very high priority one. Bradshaw Road at both the Jackson Road and Gerber Road intersections. Those two improvements we know are needed pretty soon, as well as some traffic signals on Gerber Road. So South Watt Avenue is currently just finishing up the final design and right-of-way acquisition piece. Hope to be out there building that next year and the following year. Waterman Road, it's another project that's fully funded, just pending the railroad coordination issues that we hope to make some headway on. Bradshaw-Jackson Intersection, we're building what we call a six-by-four intersection, which is two left-turn lanes, three-through lanes on Bradshaw Road, two-through lanes on Jackson Road, and a right-turn lane on all approaches. Same thing with Gerber Road, and this was an intersection we heard a lot of public feedback on through our outreach efforts, a lot of folks concerned about the westbound right turn specifically here. And then some new traffic signals on Gerber at Excelsior and Gerber at DeSalles. As far as the projects that need to be deferred in order to be able to pay for those improvements, we looked at widening a portion of Florin Road, which would be triggered soon, but the traffic volumes were only 9,000 cars a day. And we typically wait till about 18,000 cars a day before we widen from two to four lanes. And there were also a number of shoulder improvements. That would be nice if we could get them now, but the traffic volumes aren't high enough that we need to have them now. So if we push those out to a little bit later timing, we should be able to construct all those other priority improvements. And with that, I'll invite Mr. Smith up.
Thank you, Cameron. And Todd, as you're making your way up. Supervisor Hume, did you want to wait till he's done? Okay. Our Planning Director, Todd Smith.
Thank you for that introduction. Todd Smith, your Planning Director. Just getting to the planning side of this effort. As Cameron mentioned, this effort does entail an update to the overall transportation mitigation strategy for North Vineyard Station Specific Plan. But there are three approved projects, residential projects that were originally approved in the early 2000s but have not been built yet. And those have existing conditions of approval that need to be updated to reflect this new strategy. And so these are Morvai South, the west portion, Morvai Southeast portion, and then North Parkland Homes. As part of our normal rezone amendment, condition amendment process, staff did send communication to these property owners to receive their acknowledgement of approval of those revised conditions of approval. And we have received their signatures, all three of those property owners. This is new. By way of outreach, we did a couple of additional outreach efforts here. First, we started at the Vineyard CPAC. We hosted or conducted an early workshop item in September of 2021, going over the strategy, going over the changes. The CPAC members did discuss some of the public transportation options they'd like to see in the future, some potential funding sources. A lot of questions about level of service versus vehicle miles traveled. At that time, you may recall, we were in the early stages of implementing BMT metrics. And then other areas, geographic areas, that had a similar trigger approach. There were some public concerns that were raised at that early workshop around increased traffic in the community, which is an ongoing concern. And then some sentiment about the appearance of preference of developers over the residents. And staff, from that perspective, addressed that by highlighting how this updated strategy from a transportation perspective would actually help certain transportation projects become completed more timely for the community and the residents because this, as I think Cameron identified, increases some cash flow to the county to provide those transportation projects sooner rather than later. And also, we made note that individual development projects will have their own responsibilities. Obviously, Cameron went through the, the bigger picture of some of those larger transportation projects, but there will be individual project responsibility as well. And then finally, at that early workshop, there was a request for additional public outreach, which we did. So we ran an online survey using SurveyMonkey through February through June of 2022. We promoted that survey on GovDelivery, which is one of the county's mechanisms for sending out information, emails to subscribers for certain topics, as well as the Nextdoor social media platform to specific neighborhoods that are registered on Nextdoor in the Vineyard community. Between the two of those, we reached over 6,000 subscribers. We also had about 100 participants. That means people who actually took the survey, submitted responses, provided feedback to the county. And that is, I believe, attachment seven in your package. It's also attachment five in the Planning Commission package. We also sent out this survey, not just in English, but because of what we know based on the environmental justice element in order to reach more residents, we translated that survey into Spanish and Vietnamese just using demographic information we had available. Then we hosted a community workshop in April of 2022 at the Pat O'Brien Community Center. Again, we promoted that workshop on GovDelivery as well as Nextdoor. And the advisory recommendations, we returned to the CPAC following those outreach efforts. In June of last year, the Vineyard CPAC met, recommended that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this to the board. Three yes, no, no votes, and one absent member. Planning Commission met December of last year, recommended approval to the board. Four yes, zero no, one absent. And just by, as part of this normal process, we have to do environmental review. Staff did prepare an addendum to, excuse me, the original EIR for North Vineyard Station, as well as a supplemental EIR. The chronology is here, 1998, the board certified a final EIR and adopted a mitigation monitoring reporting program. That was for the original North Vineyard Station Specific Plan. There was a final supplemental EIR for the, an amendment to that plan, water treatment facilities financing plan. One of the early subdivisions, or two of the early subdivisions, Vineyard Point and Vineyard Creek. That was in November of 2004. A second final supplemental EIR for all of the roadway improvements that were identified as necessary for the specific plan. That was certified by the board in December 2007. And so those environmental documents, plus the addendum, are all available for folks to review if they deem it necessary. And the addendum identifies that all those applicable mitigation measures are still in effect. So staff is recommending approval here. The slide just goes through staff's recommendations, obviously determining that those previously certified environmental documents are adequate and complete, together with the addendum. Approving the resolution for the major amendment to the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan to implement this updated transportation mitigation strategy, incorporating those concepts that were previously endorsed by the board. And then the remaining actions are adopting a zoning ordinance for those three projects I mentioned earlier, Morvai Southeast portion, Morvai Southwest portion, and North Parkland Homes. Three separate zoning ordinances for each one of those. And that concludes staff's presentations. Both Cameron and I are available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. You know, this is the classic chicken and egg conundrum. And I say that not just because transportation projects and eggs are both incredibly expensive right now, but because you, you don't have the funding for the improvement until you have the development. But by the time you have the development, you already have the impacts. And so down in Elk Grove, we have seen both extremes of this with the East Franklin Specific Plan, where you had about a 20-year pipeline that built out in less than five. And so the impact was there and the roads weren't. And so that was a terrible situation. And then we learned from that mistake and thought, well, we'll do a, a neat experiment here and we'll have the developers put in the backbone infrastructure in advance of development. They got that in place just about in the fall of '07, when the entire wheels fell off the bus and nobody needed any roads. And so I say all of that just to say that I think, you know, you make adjustments and you try and figure out so that it's not too painful, but that we, we figure out a way to, to, to build up a little bit of money in order to pay for those improvements. And so on the next item, I'm going to be asking for the county to maybe step in and play that role a little bit. But I think we've, we've found a pretty elegant solution here to try and adjust some, some triggers and put some lower priorities, as you called out, projects off until a little bit later. But there is no secret sauce, unfortunately. One, you're gonna, you're gonna give up one to get the other, one way or the other. But I will, if there's no public comment, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay. We have a first and second. Any public comment on the item, Madam Clerk?
So we do not have anyone on the phone, but we have one person in the building. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Carpenter. I didn't know you were signed up to speak.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm George Carpenter, Wind Communities. I was here, or not here, but because by that, at that time, you had to appear virtually back in March of 2021 when this item was originally brought to the board. And so thank you to you then for giving the direction to staff that you did give. We have two residential projects in North Vineyard Station, and we also have a couple of projects in the Alberta Specific Plan. And I'm here to do a little bit of an advertisement for the next phase of DOT's work. But I first wanted to start by just thanking DOT and, and Ron and Cameron and their team for bringing this thing all the way through and seeing it through, and for planning environmental review for, for- review for, you know, helping with the public outreach and the environmental documentation. The county exec's office has permeated down through, based on your direction, to see what they can do to help with housing. And this is a perfect example of staff thinking creatively about how to reduce these burdens. And when, you know, when you look at the four strategies that are up there, I argue that all four could be helpful. The first two were certainly helpful here in the North Vineyard Station area, and it's just, it's staff looking at the old mindset and saying, hey, that's not applicable anymore. This is the way to do it. And so I hope that that continues, not only with DOT, who has been a champion of that for a couple of years now, but also the rest of the county departments. Now on to, you know, in my mind, this, the job's only kind of half-done right now with North Vineyard Station because Alberta faces the same issues. And I've been working with DOT, and I know that DOT is poised to start working on the Alberta specific plan to try to implement some of these same strategies to reduce those burdens to get that area going. There's 5,000 units out there in that specific plan, 2,000 approved on tentative maps, but it's got these, it's got these trigger hurdles. And so, you know, I just wanted you to know that this is not, this is not the end. This is just the beginning. And it took two years to get to this point. I would, you know, now that staff knows how this process works, I'm hoping that can go a little bit faster for Alberta. But anyway, I just want to say, you know, thanks to staff and thank you to you for giving that direction. I hope you approve this.
Thank you, George. I appreciate that. I appreciate that and appreciate you acknowledging staff. I remember when this came in March of 2021, and I think, you know, our DOT Director, Ron Vaccari, gave us a lengthy presentation about revisiting the way we handle these, these triggers and doing it in a way that ensures the infrastructure, infrastructure still gets built, but it doesn't negatively impact the economic viability of these projects. So, and I think, Todd, is this the first big application of this new approach, correct, North Vineyard? So we've done it on a smaller scale with some other?
I would actually ask DOT to answer that, but I believe they have done this also previously in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan.
Oh, it's the same, okay, Florin Vineyard, same, same approach. Okay. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our last item, item 62.
Wow, look at the timing.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Right on time.
Well, I tell you, wow. Who's our chair? Run a tight ship.
We don't have any speakers for this item just yet, but if we do, I will need to take an oath, and so I just want to put that out there now. Item 62 is the Villages at Elder Creek, Unit 2. Bless you, a rezone tentative subdivision map, special development permit, and major design review for a proposed subdivision of approximately 9.91 acre lot into 42 RD5-zoned residential lots located at the northeast intersection of Elk Grove, Florin Road, and McCoy Avenue in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an addendum to environmental impact report, and we'll bring up the PowerPoint.
Okay. Thank you, Flo.
Let's, let's just go ahead and do the, take the oath now, because I see Mr. Abdis and his team. Let me get myself ready. You guys snuck in. All right. Okay. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record, and if you could also provide the statement that you have been sworn.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Hello, Jessica.
Hey, good afternoon. So I believe the PowerPoint will be coming up in a minute, but I'm Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to give you a presentation on this item this afternoon, close you out with the party of folks here. So this is the Villages at Elder Creek, Unit 2 project. So a little bit of location and setting, this is in the Vineyard Community in the, it's at the intersection of Elk Grove, Florin Road, and McCoy Avenue. There were buildings on the site, they were demolished, and so the site is considered vacant, and is about a 9.91 acre size site. Some community context, the existing zoning is urban reserve, and the surrounding land uses are mostly rural homes, small farms, with the west being a future residential, already rezoned to RD7 in a subdivision. Just to note that there has been some history on the site, looking to subdivide it in the past. A number of applications have come in, none of them were seen through to the end, though. So this is the first one before you today for consideration. So today's request is a rezone to change the land use designation to residential density five from urban reserve, a small lot tentative subdivision map to divide the 9.91 acre property into 42 single-family lots, four landscape lots, and one emergency vehicle access lot, a special development permit to allow the proposed project to deviate from the following development standards, which are reducing the front yard setback by five feet to be 19 feet, and reduce the rear yard setback by six feet to be 15 feet. And then finally, a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. First, the rezone, you can see the existing and proposed here. To the north, there is existing UR as well, but you can see to the west, RD4, RD7, and then to the south, AR5, and this will move to an RD5 zone. This is the small lot tentative subdivision map. The landscape lots are shown in green. The frontage along Elk Grove Florin Road does actually have a wider-than-required landscape lot. Part of the reason for this is an existing regional sanitation line that runs along that needed its own easement area. And so staff from regional sanitation, smud, DOT, and planning all worked together to come up with a lot that could accommodate both the regional sanitation line, smud lines, and the meandering sidewalk that's required along this frontage. And then you can see on McCoy Avenue on the south side, that would also be improved with landscape lots and separated sidewalk as well. The subdivision is laid out in somewhat of a grid pattern, and you can see a stub at the north side of D Way that would potentially lead to additional subdivision development to the north, should that property become a development project in the future. These are typical lot layouts, just to demonstrate the requests for deviation from the setbacks at the front and the rear, and you can see the differences in yellow on how much they would differentiate between the required and the proposed setbacks. So again, I mentioned the Elk Grove Florin Road earlier on. You can see on the east side of this sketch here that there will be an additional area for landscaping, the regional sanitation pipe, and then the smud 69 KB lines. This project has gone through all of the standard advisory reviews. The Design Review Advisory Committee met in January of last year, recommended that the board find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. The Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council met in April of last year and recommended the board approve the requested entitlements. And finally, the Planning Commission met in December of last year and recommended the board approve the requested entitlements. So staff recommendation, we are recommending approval, and you can see the action items that we're recommending that you take, determining that the previously certified Florin Vineyard Community Plan Final Environmental Impact Report dated December 15, 2010, together with the SEQA addendum, are complete, adequate and complete, adopt mitigation monitoring reporting program, approve the rezone ordinance, approve the small lot tentative subdivision map, subject to findings and conditions, approve the special development permit, subject to findings and conditions, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, again, subject to findings and conditions. And I do want to state that we did receive a public comment letter that I believe was forwarded to your board regarding access concerns along McCoy Way. And we do have representatives from the Department of Transportation that can address this concern and provide some background on the improvements that will be happening on Elk Grove Florin and McCoy if the board so desires. And that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. And it looks like I have any other presenters on this? Flo, I have listed here Sean Dermott is going to be presenting.
For the applicant.
For the applicant, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, it's just on the notes here.
Okay, for the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Are they here? Is that? He's here, but I believe Nick Abdis would actually be the applicant representative when you're ready.
I don't see any supervisors queued up for comments or questions, so we can hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Nick Abdis with the Law Office, Abdis Akouchi on behalf of Lennar Homes, and I have been sworn. Thanks for the time today. I think pretty straightforward subdivision map. We've worked very closely with your staff and appreciate, you know, all their help in kind of moving through the issues. This is the last in a series of several subdivision maps that Lennar has brought forward in the, in the Florin Vineyard Gap. Community plan area, really proud to say is largest deliverer of homes in the county, that we've worked diligently to address all outstanding issues, including Department of Transportation staff, who I know, we received a letter recently. We're happy to get into that, but I'll leave it for now and allow for public testimony and be happy to come back and answer questions if necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Okay, with that, we'll go to a public comment.
Okay, so right now, we do have one person in person to make a comment, Mr. Brian Clemmons. We do not have anyone on the phone just yet, but I'll leave that open.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Good afternoon, Mr. Clemmons.
Good afternoon. I apologize, I broke my ankle, so it takes me a little bit. So, thank you for having me. I have a few concerns, some of which I brought up at the last meeting we had, some of which myself and Mr. Jordan, which I think you have a email from, both came up with. One concern I've got is the divider that's going to be going in on McCoy, the concrete divider for the inlet outlet, and access when you come northbound on Elk Grove Florin, turning right into McCoy, being able to get in there safely with a trailer. I have a 35-foot flatbed trailer that I haul my tractor on. The way this image is drawn up, there's not enough room to make it into McCoy, because the way, the way I'm understanding it, the divider, concrete divider, is going to go down the middle of what is existing of McCoy, not after it's widened. And currently, McCoy is 19 feet wide. It's not 42, as shown in the diagram toward the west end of the diagram, with a 21 and a 21. It's 19 feet in total. So we, I believe we're going to have issues trying to get into our residence with trailers. Also, my understanding is there has to be two accesses for emergency vehicles into the residence that's going in, and I could be wrong because I don't know the laws, but I only see one because the entrance exit closest to Elk Grove Florin is going to be blocked off by that concrete barricade, or concrete divider. I, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we'll give you a few extra seconds here.
I apologize. I, I believe that if you look at the image, there's three lanes of traffic to go out, one to go right, one to go straight, and one to go left. And I believe as far as the access in, I think that can be somewhat addressed if that concrete divider was moved to the north, the left turn lane alleviated, and the left turn lane combined with the straight lane, because you're not going to have that much traffic going from McCoy across Elk Grove Florin into the new housing development.
So your two minutes are small, I'll need you to end your public comment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, your comment, we'll need to end it because your two minutes are up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said enter. I'm sorry.
So sorry.
No, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let me double-check the phone line.
Anyone else on the phone, or anybody on the phone?
We do not have anyone as of now, so I'm going to close the phone line comment.
Okay.
And that concludes your public comments in personnel on the phone.
Great, okay. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. My comments relate to what the gentleman was just speaking about and also the email we received from Mr. Jordan. Mr. Vaccari, or someone, would you be able to address, okay, Mr. Shu? You know, I think there's two ways you skin this cat. You either put off some of the improvements that we're going to be doing until ultimate right-of-way is done, and/or we do a little greater improvement on the south side on our dime to be reimbursed later. So let's take a look at what you've come up with.
Yeah, so I think the, I mean, Cameron Shu, Principal Civil Engineering Department of Transportation. So as I understand the concerns, specifically if you're coming, making that southbound left turn into McCoy Avenue.
I would say it's actually a northbound on Elk Grove Florin into McCoy. So if you're talking about a truck and trailer trying to make that turn, there's not enough of a radius for them to come back onto the eastbound lane of McCoy.
Yeah, so I mean, so there is an existing apron on the roadway today that you call about with the turning. You know, we can look at the truck turning templates, and that's something that when Lennar comes in with their improvement plans, we do the plan checks, and we can look at the template of a truck pull and a trailer and make sure they can make that turn. If for a reason we can't make a turn with the, with this red median line here, we can always pull back the median a little bit.
Yeah, so like I say, I see the solution as being an either-or scenario. Either we put off some of the center median improvements until a later date when we do come in to improve the south side, and/or we do more of the south side improvements in advance, because here's what I see happening here, is it seems like you have some neighbors that are being fairly reasonable about the landscape changing out there. We certainly don't want to hold up the production of more housing, but, you know, how do we sort of stretch the shelf life of that roadway until it's fully improved?
Yeah, I think we're certainly open to Mr. Jordan's suggestion of using paint or striping instead of a hard median, if that's what needs to happen on an interim basis to get it to work. But we need to just run the turning templates and look at the intersection and make that evaluation.
Perfect. Flexibility is all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Ron, what's the King Penta rear axle, the formula you're using for this?
KPRA. You just had the gentleman up there that could best answer that question.
I just remembered that acronym from my CHP days, okay. Okay, and we have a request by the gentleman who sent the email, Jim and Adria Jordan. I believe every board member received a copy of that, of that email, so we're not, not going to read that into the record, but just want to acknowledge publicly that we are all in receipt of that email. Okay, any other, no other public comment? I don't see any additional comments from my colleagues.
I would, I would go ahead and move the item if it's appropriate. Is there anything that needs to be read into the record?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to staff and the applicant and your team for being here today. Okay, well, that takes us down to our county exec comments.
I just want to thank you all for taking the amount of time you took this morning to acknowledge the newly hired department heads and retiring department head. It means a lot to staff, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, any supervisor comments? Comments from colleagues?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'll just take a moment and congratulate everyone who was instrumental in a very successful inaugural Mardi Gras on the Boulevard parade a couple of Saturdays ago. This was the first of its kind on Del Paso Boulevard in Del Paso Heights, and I had the good fortune of joining Councilmember Loewy and others along the parade route, and it was very well-attended, great turnout by the public. and it was very well-attended, great turnout by the public, and I think it kind of speaks to the thirst by our constituents to have more events like this. And I've noted, too, that there's been some other regional Mardi Gras labeled events, so it's kind of nice to see that we're branching out and exploiting in a good way anytime we can to have a parade, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, seeing no further comments, I will adjourn this meeting at 3:49. Man, very good.